All right, council and staff. Time is six o'clock and I'm calling to order a regular meeting of the City Council of the city of Sunset Valley, Texas for Tuesday, February 15th of 2022. And we are going to be doing things a little bit differently for those of you that are watching at home. We have some streaming. Yeah, thanks. Got to remember to get my mask. So we are, we're going to be streaming in a little bit different fashion so you can still access it through the new YouTube channel. However, we have one remote participant which is the city administrator. And so you'll occasionally see the screen go between the agenda as well as bringing up the view which has participants in our, in our go-to meeting. I want to thank Councilman Johnson and Duncan, part of the city staff, for coordinating to provide that capability as we, as we have folks that may need to attend remotely going forward as well. A reminder, council, because we are, we're trying to hear everybody's audio, when you're not speaking, please mute your microphones and when you are speaking, remember to turn them on. It'll just keep the noise down from the rest of the, the audio stream. And so we'll, we'll proceed with that. Certainly welcome Sylvia and thank you for, for joining us and I'm glad to see that you are feeling better and I hope that your recovery continues. With that, we're going to move to agenda item number two, which is citizens and public communication. We did have one person sign up to speak and we, of course, anybody in the audience can speak at this time too. So Mr. Horgan? And make sure you turn on the microphone.
Give me a podcast and do my own channel. All right, look, my name's Dan Horgan, I live at Three Pillow Road and there's been some issues that have troubled me over the years. Mic troubles, for example. I've, I've gone to the city council meetings, I've been here for years, years, probably long before any of you. I mean, I started this here 16 years ago when I saw some things that I needed to see change. The mic troubles, thank you mayor, because every time I get up here, there's been so much reverb you can't hear me when I go home or, or even at this county commissioners court, you know, they just, it's so bad, you can't hear me. So, we wrote y'all a 21-page description, I'm not trying to alienate anybody either, by the way, I love everybody, just don't like everybody, so. But I wrote y'all a 21-page description of how this little library offended me, okay? And some senior council members here, and some of you in particular that I'm looking at tonight, you've been here a long, long, long time and you've heard me up here, heard me from my heart and everything that comes out of my head. Okay, so, I'm going to get right down to it and you're going to do something for me because there was a hate crime that was committed, perpetuated by the neighbor at Four Pillow Road. And it started when she started putting things like Black Lives Matter on my truck, okay? I had to call the police department, they'd come over, they'd do one-on-one report after the next. But she put two-by-fours on my truck, she put Clinton, Kane, she put Christmas garland all over my truck. I don't know if she was removing my orange cones or not, but they were disappearing. Let me tell you, I couldn't keep her from keeping her hands off my trash can. That was bizarre, okay? Okay, so went from the trash can to bermashay boxes and this lady put all sorts of stuff out there that offended me. It just, you know, my brother got killed in the war in Iraq, if any of y'all haven't noticed. Okay, and compared to what's going on out there, this is pretty minor, okay? But what's happened in America, it starts here and it goes from here and it goes up. So we're going to have to get those reins and pull them back. She put bermashay boxes out there, she went to court, she premeditatedly made up a story, delivered and perjured herself before the judge and a court reporter writing this stuff down in a court of no record, but there is a record, you see, there's always a record. I don't know, excuse me, I'm almost done. So we need oversight committee and Dick Lee and I will volunteer to do that. And if there's a committee that can oversight us, that's fine, because there can be somebody monitoring a monitor. Now you've given me PTSD from the years of suffering and dealing with this, because I come to you and explain my pain, suffering, nothing, in return, just denial and ignoring me. You denied me over a little blue box that turned into trash, just a trash box. They went and did an investigation on a blue box, piece of trash that was put there, 30 days after the blue box was, I don't know, vandalized or capsized or dumped over. But we need term limits on council members because some of you, you know, you need a fresh idea here, because none of y'all are listening. I have an entourage of people that have been listening to me for years and years, they're high-paid people. You think we're stupid? We're Horgans, man. You're going to get to know it. I'm an artist. Y'all have held me back and kept me from succeeding my dreams while you built a church next door, defended me. Let me tell you, they went from there across the street and your little blue box turned into slide-out, pop-out trailer. And I don't care, that's okay with me, but that doesn't offend me as much as a, a building that's at Two Pillow Road. So you got one, she been eight arms across from the school district, good little kids, it's a religious resembling figure, symbol, that should not be there and you know it. And I know Mark Wells is a bad example, but you couldn't save the neighbor from a neighbor, one neighbor, Forrest, okay, Forrest Arnold had to move out of Sunset Valley, thank you.
Thank you. It's been four minutes.
Thank you, I'm coming right on back, thank you. God bless you.
Thank you. Does everybody else wish to speak at this time? Please go, go ahead and step up to the mic and remember to, if you could, oh, it's already on, but speak closely to it so we can pick it up.
Thank you mayor, thank you council. My name is Charles Young, I live at 26 Rees Drive and I am the chair of the finance committee. Can you hear me okay? All right. I want to speak regarding agenda item number 12, which is budget amendment number two. There's been a lot of back and forth on this amendment, I think a lot of it obfuscating what the real issues are. This amendment and the amendment that came before it are not the problem, they are symptoms of the problem with the administration of our finances. Councilmember Litchfield, who was a member of the budget and finance committee last year and observed these issues firsthand, very eloquently described what those problems were in the February 1 city council meeting, but I think they're worth reiterating. Those problems are, number one, the non-compliance with our, with our financial policies, which I think is a very serious thing. Number two is the disarray of our financial management, which I and other members of the budget and finance committee have been pointing out recently. Numbers don't add up and constantly fluctuate due to errors and mismanagement. And number three, a lack of communication about concerns and issues raised by, not just the budget finance, budget and finance committee, but other committees that are not being communicated fully and accurately, if at all, to the council and to the mayor. What I'm asking council and mayor to do is address and try to solve these problems. Our financial policies need to be followed and more importantly enforced. When they are violated, there needs to be accountability and appropriate administrative action taken. Our processes, procedures and tools certainly need to be improved, but none of these can address the fundamental issue of the mismanagement of our financial systems. If staff is unwilling or unable to communicate the information committees want to go to council, then there needs to be direct lines of communication from the committees to council and mayor. All of these problems are the responsibility of council and mayor and you're the only ones who can solve these problems. The rest of the back and forth on this agenda item is a lot of noise and irrelevant details that completely miss the issues. Saying that violations of our policies also happen in the past is highly misleading. Those violations were small and largely meaningless. We've never had amendments in the $350,000 to $400,000 range where almost half the money being requested had already been spent in the case of agenda item number one. Previous amendments were much smaller and generally non-controversial. To explain away the errors and fluctuations by saying that the changes are happening in open gov in real time is also misleading. Expenses should go up as time goes on, they should not be bouncing up and down as they constantly do. Oh, sorry. Blaming cost overruns on employees with credit cards is also completely misleading and irrelevant, it has nothing to do with the real issues. All of this is a smokescreen intended to distract and confuse council and citizens from the actual issues. I realize that all of this controversy is unpleasant, uncomfortable, stressful, but the alternative of raising these issues is to turn, is to turn a blind eye, pretend everything is okay, ignore all the problems that are getting worse and worse, and hope that it all goes away. After watching the state of our finances fall into more disarray, fall more and more into disarray over the past two years, I can't do that. But all I and other members of the committee can do is identify and communicate these issues to mayor and council. Fixing this has to be your responsibility. Our finances are the lifeblood of the city. Competent financial management is a foundational administrative task of this city. The mess we see today in our financial systems is not okay. Neither I nor anyone else in the finance committee is accusing anyone of malfeasance and I know no evidence to that effect. But if this continues on, we will slowly but surely lose our ability to effectively manage the city if we can't manage our finances. And if our finances continue to be disarrayed and if our policies are abused or ignored, then someday someone will take advantage of that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. If there's anybody else who wishes to speak at this time for public citizen comments, please step up to the podium. All right, we are going to move on to the staff reports, beginning with the administration report. And Sylvia, are you going to be briefing this one? Great.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Sorry, I can't be there in person. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, you're coming across clear.
Okay. One of the first items to address is the budget expense report that the city council asked and we said we would provide, that is in the hyperlink in your report. It is a very detailed report of every budget expense that has happened in this two-week period. We're going to give you a better summary report, but for today, I wanted you to see every single detail. And this aligns with what is in open gov, because I remind everybody that open gov is but a viewer into the financial system. This is a tool that is now being used by the directors every two weeks as they create POs or make charges against a line item, they have to verify that the funds are there. That's been pushed down to the director level, as it should be, they're managing their departments and they're managing their workload. So please take a look at the report, if there's any other information you'd like to see, you can get with Susanna and myself and we'll do our best to give you a report that is straight out of the system with no manipulation whatsoever. So Matt and Carolyn have been working primarily on the website long. 22nd of this month, Matt's going to put himself offline the rest of this week to make sure that that happens. We are still following COVID-19 protocols, but I am a perfect example that that is not always perfect. I tested negative twice and then had a positive, very, very scary COVID illness. I understand the council meetings in March are going to be rescheduled around spring break and the retreat is still scheduled for the 4th and the 5th, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. We're, we're finalizing the agenda, I have a meeting with Karen and Tom tomorrow to talk over the final agenda and we're hoping that we can also include committee chairs and vice chairs on the Saturday portion on the 5th. So we'll be sending out some communications to the council, our liaisons and the committees about the timing of that and hopefully we can get a good attendance. Put my mask on and then I, sorry about that.
Additionally, the Brody SUP, the special use permit for both the restaurant and the alcohol will be heard at zoning and then it's going to come to council. I did have early conversations with the Drakers today and I'm working with them to ensure that at every step of the way, their interests are protected. And that means hours of operations, as you guys discussed, will have to be part of the special use permit, but we'll go through that more in detail in the staff report when that item comes forward. Board of adjustment will also be hearing the 64I5 Brody landscaping buffer and that is the side that's on the Galt property, it is still zoned residential even though the plan is for park, because it's not zoned park, it is still zoned residential, it still requires 100-foot buffers, so that will require a variance. Upcoming topic, development process review, I think 6405 is going to be a perfect example of how we can revamp it so that it works for everybody involved. There's going to be an item on Laserfish document management system, Councilmember Johnson's been working with staff trying to help us get everything off of the web into some sort of management system that's easily retrievable and not lost. Last year, we talked a little bit about computer equipment purchases that were mixed up in repair and replacement and competing with things like air conditioners, et cetera, so we're going to take an item to budget and finance, but the repair and replacement budget really warrants a complete overhaul. And then of course, budget planning. I've asked the budget and finance committee to start their meetings one month in advance to be able to view the budget at the 50,000-foot level that staff puts together from a revenue and expense standpoint as opposed to diving into the details. The details will come, I just want to make sure that we have a holistic view of the budget that is in line with the goals the council has set at retreat. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions for the city administrator or the, on the administrator report? Mayor Partem?
Yeah, hello. I hope then you are feeling good Sylvia. When I was looking this report for transactions, in page 102. So if you will see page 102, they refer to software maintenance. So in software maintenance account 5782, looks like the budget was $7,000 and it's an actual $8,300. So we have available 1,300 or we are over?
Software maintenance is one of those accounts that's been combined, I'm not, I can't see the numbers, the screen is very, very, very small. Did you?
Maybe Matt, he can help you, he's watching that.
Can you see that Sylvia? So he's, he's addressing, okay, so, yeah, this line, the total line right here.
So 7,000 to 83, there's the FY '22 budget, yes, that's correct, is 7,000. It looks like there's some carryover, Matt, can you scroll back so I can see the, the description?
This is for the, this is department two, right? So this is the police department software?
It's the police department, correct.
So I believe, I believe those are categorized by department.
My question is, is over or is under?
It appears that it is over, Councilmember Carmona. I'll have to check with Susanna to make sure everything is coded properly, but it looks like the budget for that particular line item in the police department fund was $7,000 and it appears that there's expenses of 8393.
Yeah, I, I think that is important if they are watching that. Was very difficult for me to look over 100 something pages that I watched, some of that detail, so, but thank you then, now we can see that.
We have a summary sheet for you, the, the only thing is, the summary sheet printed on Monday and checks posted on Friday, so I didn't want to be accused of the numbers changing again, so in your next report, that'll come in two weeks, you'll have a summary sheet with all the detail in the back.
Thank you.
Councilor Litchfield?
So on a similar note, on page 50, and getting a dump of all the transactions is, I mean, it's, it's information, but this is like malicious compliance almost. So I see like line item, like the account code 5327, which I'd asked Susanna about a couple times, this transaction for $6,630. It looks like most of the things posted into this line item were then moved out because apparently that was a mistake, but this one's been sitting there since sometime in October. So can we get some color on that item, please?
And that's another, that's another issue where that was a holding account, if there was a receipt that came in that staff was unsure where to code it, this was the holding, then a journal entry was provided to Susanna and she moved it to the appropriate account. We've since gotten together and said, if you don't know where to code it, it just doesn't go anywhere, we need better clarification from the engineers and we've gotten to the point where the reports are much easier to follow, the codes have been provided to everybody and so everything should be charged according to where it belongs.
So this is, but it's dramatically over budget, right? So this is, this is a case where the budget for this was...
No, that's 6,630, there, there should be nothing assigned to 01, because 01 is engineering design fees. There's nothing in the administrative fund that has engineer design fees. The design and plan review fees are in 5330, so this is an error in coding. Every engineering...
Well, I asked about this and councilmembers Rosengarden and Reeds were apparently sitting down and they went through all the transactions and they assure us that everything's correct. So how is it possible that there's a coding issue?
Everything is correct with that explanation, Councilmember Litchfield. I, I put it in an email to the entire council, I gave the explanation of how that ended up in that code and we provided all of the engineering documentation as well as the assigned task orders and the receipts.
So this should be in this code and it's over budget, or it should not be in this code and has not been corrected?
It should not be in this code, there should be, there was only 300 or so dollars, $376 that was in this code. Administration should not, should not have any design fees. It should go to the appropriate code, whether that is most likely a CIP project or it could be engineer design. That is 5330 that goes to when the engineers review actual projects that come before council or are helping staff with plan review.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I had emailed Susanna to ask for clarification on that item and didn't hear back, so.
Councilor Reeds?
Yeah, I guess I was confused about your comment, this is this year's budget. Where did you get the idea that we have gone through everything and assured everything for this year's budget? We've been looking at the budget amendment.
Okay, my mistake.
Okay.
I misunderstood.
Councilor Rosengarden?
5327 is only used for items that have not made it through the budget. In other words, we get done with the budget, the year's over, 2022 starts, something happens out there in the field and we put that line item in 5327, that's the only time it is used. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor Partem?
I don't want to do a debate, debate, but yes, I marked that in page 50, then I, then I tried to say this, if we have information, why we don't have notes? And that notes will clear out that, okay, this is something 5327, was a mistake of coding, that they will be doing that, okay? Or other person has the idea, no, 5327 is for the end of the year, I didn't know that. So that is new for me, but please, if we have all of that information, we, we need to be sure and we need to put notes, some asterisks and say, we are checking this and in that way, we are known, it's not put the finger, it's because we need to trust. And at this moment, it's excellent that they are doing this report. It needs to be actual and needs to be with all the opinions or comments of the members of the city council, because we need to start trusting and the best way is take your time and try to do the things properly, is my suggestion. I have more, I saw more things, but I don't want to put fingers, I want to create, not to destroy. Thank you.
Other questions for the city administrator or anything on the administrator report?
Thank you.
Moving on to Public Works?
Good evening, mayor and council. I just want to, you know, give a shout out to all of our employees, especially PD and Public Works employees who stayed overnight during the freezing weather and sanded and salted the, you know, the bridges and just made sure everybody was safe during that time and I really appreciate all the work that they've done to, you know, for emergency response and just keeping residents and the people who come to Sunset Valley safe. In addition, I want to, you know, thank also our guys who work in the water because we got to follow up a freeze by a boil water notice and I know that's a struggle for everybody who has to live through that and I appreciate everybody's hard, you know, patience and understanding when sometimes we have situations that are literally just beyond our control. So if anybody has any questions on anything specific in the report, I would be happy to answer that, but I just wanted to highlight those two items this evening.
Yes, thank you very much to staff for preparing for the emergency weather that we, we had, thankfully it was not as severe as last year's. And then for the quick follow-up to all the questions we had regarding the boil water notice, which I know is complicated with some of the rules around testing and our ability to lift, I also want to thank staff for being available to support distribution of water and for staff members that went out to actually go purchase water on their own time to bring it to city hall for distribution, so I appreciate that. Council, questions for Public Works? All right. Thank you Carolyn, and we'll move on to PD with Chief Carter.
Good evening. I'll just keep it to one item. As of February 10th, our citywide security cameras have been installed, we've completed a train the trainer for how to use them and we're, we've already since that time, I think we're on our fifth stolen car that's come through Sunset Valley, numerous alerts about other cases from other agencies. It, this is, I mean, this, everybody at the PD is very excited about this, it's, it gives us the ability to track how many times certain repeat offenders have come into our city, I mean, it's incredible. I'll have to schedule a time to kind of do a demo, I think we'll try to do that at this upcoming public safety meeting, but it's, this is really big for our little city, so I'm glad we pushed, we made it through and thank you all for your patience in this project, seeing it through. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions for public safety? I just wanted to show the website real quick, so. Oh, please. Yeah, so it will officially go live and I want to really thank Councilmember Johnson who's helped me through this process and also a special thank you to former councilmember Medicas who is really integral in getting this project going and she's even helped attend meetings and kind of helped us along the way. So this, this is the new website that will go live next Tuesday, 2/22/22. And it will, right now it has this URL, but on the, when they, when we go live with the site, it will have the same URL that this, the city's website currently has, so it will still be sunsetvalley.org. So this is the homepage and, you know, it's got a lot of similar things that you're used to, like the council meetings and agendas. When we designed it, these are probably the most used links, so you've got open gov, our code of ordinances, meeting agendas, committees, trash and recycling, and then open town hall. There's a news feature and, well, this is a story from January, so we'll, we'll have an updated story. And then if you keep scrolling, here's the calendar, so the city calendar is populated. You can also access the calendar from up here as well and residents are used to seeing it this way with the month view. And another great feature that I'm, still have a lot of work to do on in the next week is the service finder, so residents and just anyone that has business with the city, you know, I want to find my trash and recycling information and then it will take you to the appropriate page. So Carolyn and I have more work to do, but hopefully it'll all come together by, by next Tuesday, so. I think it looks great and I really appreciate all the hard work and, and that staff put into it and thanks to Councilmember Johnson and former councilmember Medicas as well. I'm really excited that we have a, a new website coming that's, that's going to hopefully make it easier for people to find sources, so.
make it easier for people to find sources. So, Councilmember Rosengarden?
Will the new website allow us to do research easier? Because my complaint is right now I can never get to the information that I want.
Yes, so that will actually not, that will not technically be solved by our new website. The website will have a lot better search capabilities, but the problem, well, a lot of problems is that we used our old website, our old CMS as our document repository, which was not good and that's one of the reasons we're having to implement Laserfish. So just so everyone's aware, if y'all read the memo, so the only agendas that were moved over to the new site were 2021 agendas. So 2020 and prior agendas have not been moved over to the new website. We will be bringing forward a proposal to budget and finance next week and then council will see it on March 8th to implement Laserfish. We have a really good price for an annual contract license with Laserfish. That will allow us to, it will, it will be our document management system. And what that will allow is as we upload all of the old agendas, even scanning, Councilmember Johnson and I were able to scan an old agenda from 2008, I believe, that's never been, lived on the website and it has document OCR. So it's, you know, it's able to, you know, when we typed in, I think we typed in Terry Cowan and, you know, Mayor Cowans, because Mayor Cowan, he was the mayor at the time, so he popped up. So all of the documents that we upload to, to Laserfish and then there's an option. So we will make anything that's a council agenda, a committee agenda, minutes, those will all be public facing. So there will be a public portal that the public can access and it should make researching a lot easier. You know, you can type in 6405 Brody and any, any agenda that has 6405 Brody should populate. So that will solve that problem, hopefully.
Councilmember Johnson?
And the, so I, I have a backup of the existing website and it's about seven gigs worth of files. The Laserfish provider, they gave us a 45-day demo. I'm uploading everything from the web, the current website up there and there'll be a public portal. So that's this kind of like interim step until, you know, if we approve it, you know, there'll be a place where we can search as if we were paying for it. So, and I can schedule a demo or I can just pass on their information to like, get you guys have a demo of it. It's pretty awesome.
Yeah, and I think the, the information to share with the public is that when we go live with the new website, they'll be accessible through the website agendas through last year, through 2021. We will also make available through our Laserfish demo site, the materials that were previously on the website until we transitioned fully to Laserfish. And if we decide for some reason not to transition to Laserfish, we will find an alternative way to, to make sure those documents are accessible.
Right, so in the, our stopgap is there will be a form on the website that if you want to, you know, I want to access the zoning agenda from 2017, like you can fill out that form and it will not be treated as an open records request. It will go directly to me and I can easily, because I'll still have access to all the old website files, I can easily get that to you until we have Laserfish or whatever document management system we implement ready to go. So that's, that will be our stopgap, that form, so.
All right, any questions about the website or any other questions to staff before we move on to the rest of our agenda? All right, Council, that takes us to Agenda Number Four, which is council consideration of agenda items for approval on consent. And Councilmember Rosengarden?
I move to approve on consent. Agenda item number five, minutes of February 1st and 2nd with corrections. Agenda item number six, engineering task order number 13. Agenda item number seven, spring cleaning month. Agenda item number eight, public art policy. Agenda item number nine, racial profiling report. Agenda item number 10, council meeting moved to March 8th and 22nd. Agenda item number 11, zoning change previously approved.
Council, there's a motion to approve on consent, item number five, number six, number seven, number eight, number nine, number 10, and number 11. Does anybody wish to pull any of those items from that? Mayor Portem?
Yeah, number 11.
Okay, number 11 is pulled. Any other items want to be pulled from that list? Is there a second for that motion? Councilmember Reitz?
I will second.
All right, so the motion before us is to approve on consent, item number five, number six, number seven, number eight, number nine, and number 10. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. We approved on consent, item number five, consider an act on approval of the minutes from February 1 through 2nd, 2022, regular meeting with, with edits or corrections submitted by Councilmember Rosengarden and received by the city secretary. Item number six, consider an act on authorizing, authorizing engineering task order number 13 for replacement of the Highway 290 wastewater line and amount not to exceed $45,000 to be funded from fiscal year 2022 CIP project list. Item number seven, consider an act on approval of proclamation declaring March 2022 as spring cleaning month and sunset, in Sunset Valley. Item number eight, consider an act on approval of guidelines for display of art in public places as recommended by Sunset Valley Arts Commission. Item number nine, consider an act on acceptance of the 2021 racial profiling report to be submitted to the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement. And item number 10, consider an act on changing the regular city council meeting dates in March 2022 to March 8th and March 22nd. Council, we did have the spring cleaning proclamation, which I will happily read into our, our record.
I was thinking about getting like a comically oversized scroll and then we can like paste it in there.
And I particularly want to read this because I did have residents from our street actually write about what the city can do to, to better encourage residents to, to reuse, to recycle, to clean up. So this is perfect, a time to kind of draw attention to this. You know, I think the city, you know, does this every year, but it's also just a, it's, it's not something that we do just, just to do it, you know, and make the proclamation. It's, you know, there's action behind it too. And so the city has a lot of services that we provide to recover items that, you know, we take to, you know, to dispose of in a proper way. So with that, a proclamation by the mayor and city council, the city of Sunset Valley, Texas declaring the month of March 2022, spring cleaning month, and to encourage a healthy and aesthetically pleasing environment for all. Whereas a community oriented spring cleaning month is the most cost-effective way for the Public Works Department to serve citizens of Sunset Valley and whereas the removal of dead limbs and brush from the residences of Sunset Valley is necessary to control pests, reduce fire hazards, and promote the health of trees and shrubs. And whereas Travis County and the city of Austin accept otherwise non-disposable hazardous waste generated in Sunset Valley free of charge. And whereas recycling saves the state of Texas millions of dollars in disposal costs, generates jobs, and recognizes the first and easiest way for Texans to get involved with taking care of Texans and saves a tremendous amount of important resources. Now for, now therefore be proclaimed by the city council of the city of Sunset Valley, Texas that the month of March 2022 shall be spring cleaning month in which the Public Works Department will promote a cooperative citywide effort to encourage recycling and facilitate the removal of bulky refuse and hazardous waste from the residences of Sunset Valley, Texas. And I think Public Works will be sending out in our newsletter information about ways that people can bring their items in for disposal and other tips for recycling or for cleaning up. Council, unless you had anything to add, Carolyn?
No, we will be sending out a spring cleaning month brochure later this month.
And I, that same resident sent in some, their own page that we can include in the monthly newsletter, you know, just in terms of, you know, what they, they, I encouraged, I encouraged him to do so and so I'll forward it to you as far as that. Councilmember Johnson?
I was wondering if there's appetite to move forward Agenda Item 13? Just kind of get some stuff out of the way before we dig into the meat?
All right, so Council, if we're okay with that, we'll, we'll move, we'll move Agenda Item Number 13 up to discuss that now and we'll return or resume with Agenda Item Number 11 and Number 12, or with the Number 11, okay. So Council, that takes us to Item Number 13, which consider an act on appointments to the Parks and Open Space Plan Ad Hoc Committee. So I think the, the, Carolyn had sent out the latest additions to the applicants in addition to what was in the backup. Maybe Carolyn, if you can summarize where we're at in terms of the, the applicants that we received for that.
So yes, I did send out, we had a couple last minute additions that had sent in applications. And then we had one who just is submitting an application now who would like to be considered for that. We had mentioned her name before, Isabel Guthrie, lives over in Sunset Valley Meadows. And so I believe that should bring us up to 11 total residents who have volunteered to serve on this committee. They do represent a wide age variety, different parts of the city, and some with young families and different things like that. So it'll be, I think it's a good mix of people there.
Just a question, since I don't know all the individuals on here, do we have any of the, sorry, areas of the city that are not represented by this list of people?
So nobody from Sterns, I mean, some of the smaller streets, so Sterns, Jones, I mean, those smaller streets haven't submitted any applications, but pretty much we have at least one resident from, like a few from Old Town, Oakdale, the Meadows, and one from the Villas, so.
All right, Council, questions for staff on this or other discussion? This is something that we, we encouraged between our last council meeting and this one to, for residents to apply. You know, we wanted to make sure that it was, I think, representative of our city in terms of geographic locations. There's also consideration of making sure that we had a wide range of age, you know, just that we have perspectives from, from different residents on that. Councilmember Reitz?
Yes, I think that's great. It does look like all the neighborhoods are fairly well represented and so that is great. So the, the question that came up with the marketing ad hoc committee and one of the critiques is that was kind of the first time that I was aware that we did that. And one of the critiques is that we didn't really elect a chair or anything like that and we didn't have any really formal methodology. And so, and it worked, it worked fine. It was kind of, you know, maybe it's not as organized as it could have been, but it was kind of a learning experience. And so the question is, is should, what process will they go through? Will they elect a chair and that kind of thing? And have we thought through that?
Yes, so once the council makes this list official of these residents, I will be reaching out to them and we will schedule an initial meeting. They will have a chair and vice chair that they will elect during that meeting because it's part of the, what was discussed as part of the process is having that chair and vice chair if they are able to assist in, you know, participate in the calls that we have with Asakura Robinson so they can hear, you know, the feedback and everything along the way outside of, you know, public meetings, to hear status and things like that. So they will have a chair and vice chair. So a lot of what's going to happen with the process is that it's going to be a big public process to begin with. So we'll have our initial meeting with the committee, kind of get them set up, get them kind of organized. They can obviously watch and participate along the way as just general members of the city. And then they'll have more regular meetings when we get toward the end of the process. So we'll be setting all of that up and discussing everything with them when we get the first meeting scheduled.
And Carolyn, we'll also, I think, need to, likely council will want to appoint a liaison from council. We, we did that for the ad hoc marketing committee, I think, but I'm not sure it's a requirement for special committees, but I think council may want to, to take that action too. We didn't discuss that last time, but that'd be something to consider for council as well if we wanted to do that as a follow-up to this. I think, you know, that would be a separate action item, so. Councilmember Johnson?
Do we know how to define when they're done also?
When council approves whatever has been sent forward from them. I think that was actually in the document from, that from two weeks ago when we said basically that once council has approved it, then the ad hoc committee will be dissolved.
Great. Councilmember Johnson?
It's right, it's right in front of me. I can't mess this up. So I move that we act on appointment of members to the Parks and Open Space Ad Hoc Committee. Do I have to list the, the names? Then I'm not? As listed with the addition of Isabel Guthrie.
So the motion is to form the ad hoc committee with the listed names with the addition of Isabel Guthrie? Councilmember Litchfield?
Second.
Second? All right. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? Great. Thank you to the P and E committee. Thank you, Carolyn, for this and thank you to the residents who stepped up to volunteer for this committee. I'm excited to, to see it underway. All right, Council, we're going to return to Item Number 11. Consider an act on approval of an ordinance amending the zoning classification for 6405 Brody Lane, single family to neighborhood commercial, and amending the city's zoning map as previously approved by city council on February 1st, 2022. And Councilmember, or Mayor Portem, this is one that you wanted to be pulled from consent, so I'll let you go ahead and speak first.
Yes, basic, I would like that the staff, they will give it to me some definitions because last session then we had, we were doing a zoning change. And today, they say zoning amendment. So why we need to do that today?
I mean, an amendment is a change, so this is, this is the codification of that zoning change, that zoning application for amendment to, really it's, the technical term is amendment to the zoning classification. So the property was classified as single family and council approved at the last meeting a change, an amendment to their classification to now become neighborhood commercial. So what this ordinance does is it codifies that, that council action and also formally changes the zoning map of the city. And Sylvia, feel free to add anything else.
Sure. In the, in the future and in the normal course of events, what should happen is your ordinance should state that as soon as a zoning change happens, all the land use maps change. And the ordinance is part of the action that council takes. The ordinance wasn't ready when, when we approved, not that it wasn't ready, but we knew that the council wanted to add some stipulations. So those stipulations are included here and it's just codifying the action that you took last meeting.
Yep. I, I don't know if we can see the, the map.
So, so the change is down here, let me zoom out. So see, the property is now here in the orange, the kind of burnt orange color for neighborhood commercial.
When I was looking last week, last week, the property close to that was in green. Now it's in yellow.
Yes, so they, what they showed on their backup, the applicant showed, and I did, I did address this with the applicants, but the applicants were showing that property as green because that's what the future land use map shows, but it's, it's still, the future land use map of Sunset Valley shows the GALT property as, or lists the GALT property as a future conservation or green space. The actual zoning of the property is still single family. So the applicant's argument was that the project aligned with the, with the property to the north for the city's future use of their, because it's the city's property. Yeah.
Yeah, well, I have, I, I don't feel so, so confident and I said my, my comments last, last time because the, the land, the zoning that we have, we used to have one for 2020. And in 2020 was a little different and they were using 2010 in the meeting that we have with these developers. But today is different and looking the rules, then we need to start thinking. When I was looking the, the section 150 from the Land Development Code, they refer to a site plan, an attachment A and attachment B. So we didn't approve that. So if today, we are talking about this, this is a little, we are, we are going deeper without knowledge and I, I, we need to be careful that this is what we are doing or why we didn't do last time. Because last time, when I asked, they told me no Alfonso. Today is zoning change. So we have to be careful because if we will go today and we will approve this, we are approving some site plan that not necessarily, it's a conceptual, but-
No, sir, we're not approving a site plan today. That's not what the ordinance says.
So can you tell me-
Let's read the, I mean, if you read the language of the ordinance.
The, the ordinance is only approving the zoning, the underlying zoning, and the conditions that council placed on that zoning. That, that's the only thing this ordinance is doing. Yes, council has the authority- Yes, council has the authority, had the authority to request the site plan and those things as part of the zoning discussion, and you did, I believe the zoning commission did, and which is the site plan that they provided, but no, we're not, I understand your concern, Councilmember Carmona, you're afraid that if we approve the zoning tonight, we're approving that site plan, and no, I don't want to call it a site plan, I want to call it a conceptual, because no, we have not approved that yet.
So, I don't want to go outside of the, the topic, but this, this is, this is something that, it has a lot of open windows. Why? I can see again, Lone Oak 37. Can we see the map, please? So, it's a single resident, so still, so why we are not doing nothing for that? Now, on November, we purchased the other in Brody, the $1 million. So, if today, they plan to do some adjustment to all of this zoning map, why they didn't do that together?
Well, the, the future, so, we are going to be going through a comprehensive plan review eventually, and so, the future land use map will then, because the, the future land use map is a reflection of the, you know, or, is a reflection of the comprehensive land use plan.
You're right.
So...
You're right.
Yeah, so we, so, so that is what, and I believe that's what Sylvia spoke to, that's what needs to be updated.
Yeah, but you...
So, two things, two things, Councilmember Carmona, 37 Lone Oak and the property at 6105 that we just purchased, they require city initiation of the rezoning. When 37 Lone Oak was brought to zoning commission, that rezoning was denied, so that's why it remains single family. We will initiate a change on the Brody property, but there's an issue that I raised to the council prior to you, and again, to planning and environmental, that the state code is very clear on conservation and park. Things have more protection when they're called park, because you need voter approval to sell it. So, in my mind, as we go through the comprehensive plan and we go through the Land Development Code, we really want to call these things parkland, because you want to protect the ability to not sell them later on, but those require city initiated rezonings. I'm not sure what the politics were about 37 Lone Oak being denied its rezoning, but yes, you should see that in the next few council meetings where we initiate that rezoning on our own.
In order to avoid to continue, I don't know if legally, last session, they present that map with a green space, and today, I don't see more that green close to that property. So, at that time, we were looking in one way, and now we have this information. I don't want to stop this, the process, but I don't feel, I don't like also to start doing that change. If last time, they were telling me this, I would be agree or disagree, but today, I don't see why we come back. That's all that I tried to say, and I don't try to stop, councilmembers. Thank you.
Councilor Rosen, garden.
I move to approve an ordinance amending the zoning classification for 6405 Brody Lane from single family to neighborhood commercial and amending the city's zoning map as previously approved by council on February 1, 2021, 2022, considering that the city open space plan and city map that we are looking at with this agenda item is the official map for the city. Thank you.
So, it's a motion to approve the ordinance amending the zoning classification. Is there a second for that motion? Councilor Litchfield?
Second, please.
All right, that opens up for further discussion. I know we, we had one, I saw, just checked up, so we had one open comment on this, and if there's anybody, Mr. Morris, I think it was your comment, do you want to speak to this item here, or? All right, so that, council, is there further discussion on this item? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right, motion passes. All right, council, that takes us to agenda item number 12. Consider an Act on Approval of an Ordinance Amending Fiscal Year 2021 Budget Amendments and Appropriation of Budget Surplus. So, this one was carried forward from our last meeting, and we were going to have a special call session, which we had to, we had to reschedule, so we moved this agenda item to this meeting, so we could have, have this discussion, and this is sponsored by Councilmember Litchfield and Rosen Garden, so. With that, I think staff doesn't, I don't think we have anything more from staff, it's essentially the same item that we've had before, it's a couple times now, but I'll let the sponsors speak first, if they wish to speak to this item, and of course, we can take questions and, and talk with staff as well. Councilor Rosen, garden.
I feel confident on this amendment, that we can move forward. We have, my councilmember Reed's and myself have gone and looked at financial statements for 2020, 2021. We have looked at the bank accounts for Wells Fargo, we have looked at the bank accounts for Chase, we have looked at the tax pool accounts where the fund withdrawals and transfers were done, and we verified the information is correct, that the funds being moved, are not being moved into someone's personal account at this time, from what we could see. I talked to a TML attorney, he said the auditor wants a fully baked cake, not a half-baked cake. In other words, we need to have 2020, 2021 finished for the auditor to do their work. Any information the auditor gives us as recommendations, he said, that we can then accept the recommendations from the auditor and ask staff to hold to those recommendations. Credit rating could be affected if we delay on not paying the bills and just stop everything as what was mentioned in a previous council meeting, so we want to continue to pay our bills, work diligently on being financially responsible. And with that, I move to approve the amendment number two, FY 21.
There's a motion to approve the budget adjustment, is that part A?
Part A, yes.
Is that the only thing that your, your motion is concerning right now?
They're tied together. I was concerned previously on another issue, but I will say, and appropriation of budget surplus.
All right, and so that's essentially the whole item?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so there's a motion to approve the ordinance amending fiscal year 2021 budgets, budget adjustment number two for fiscal year 21, and appropriation of a budget surplus. Is there a second for that motion? Councilor Reed?
I will second.
Okay, that opens up for discussion. So, council, please ask away. Councilor Litchfield?
So, first, to the, to the statement, I think there's been a big misunderstanding, and I think it's absolutely my fault, when I said that we should kind of push the big red button to pause everything. So, that's a metaphor from like a lean manufacturing technique, so companies like Toyota do it, and what that means is when you've got an assembly line with like a thousand people, you know, there's like this concept of like, stop the line, big red button. So, if somebody sees a bunch of manufacturing defects start to come up at their, at their workstation, maybe there's like a bit that went bad or something, they stop the line, the line stops, they get all the necessary attention on fixing that right then, because they know that errors will just propagate and build and cause catastrophe down the line. It means, it does not mean that like, they push the button, everybody goes on break for three months or anything like this, right? So, it's like, we need to bring all the correct attention to getting this topic worked out, not that we're going to stop paying our bills, not that we're going to do something like this. It means that we need to sit down in a conference room together and get this worked out, we need to understand what our policies are, whether or not we should follow them, whether or not, like what we should do when they're not followed, and how we can have better processes going forward. That's what I've asked for. I'm not asking us to sacrifice our credit rating at, at some like crazy altar of not paying our bills. I don't think it would take any more than a day of us in a conference room with, you know, appropriate city staff, probably the head of budget and finance, but we should be ready to put in a long day to do it, because I think it's, you know, the lifeblood of our city. So, we need to figure out, how do we have processes that give us accurate numbers? Right now, we just don't, or we've never had like an accurate number get to the budget and finance committee. We don't have compliance with our policies, and we have a lack of communication from a number of things, and we need to focus on those issues. Now, this like budget adjustment of like going back in time and trying to justify expenses or whatever, I still don't think we need to do it. You know, when I've got an employee and they come to me with a travel and entertainment budget that's way out of line with budget, you discipline the employee and you deal with it. You don't say like, oh, I'm going to go back and make your, you know, travel and entertainment budget much bigger. We're going to have items that are over budget, and that's fine. Thank you.
Councilor Reed?
So, I am glad to hear about the interpretation of not stopping payments, because I heard grind to a halt and all that, and so there was maybe an overreaction on my thoughts that, that could have very serious repercussions, so I'm glad to hear that. And I don't want this to be an acrimonious discussion. What I did hear last, two weeks ago, were implications of fraudulent behavior, et cetera, and, you know, one in particular was the changing of a report with numbers, and, you know, and I looked at, I looked into that, it took me about 15 minutes. It was a reformatting of a report, and then the numbers are tied like an Excel spreadsheet, and they were tied, it was reformatted, and they didn't total. That's what it was all about. It was a simple mistake. That was verified with Susannah, our city accountant, and I have an email to back that up, so there was no fraudulent behavior. Now, policies were violated, there's no question. They were. Now, is this something new in our city? No. This has been going on since I have been on budget and finance, which I have over five years of budget and finance experience, and they have been going on, and we have budget, budget amendments every year. So, now, I need to give a little bit of perspective, if I can, because it was only myself and councilmember Rosen Garden were a part of this process when this budget was designed. This was in May of 2020 is when it started. Now, y'all all think back what was happening in May of 2020, we had COVID. No one knew what was going on, no one knew what was going to happen. We had, we were just, you know, it's like, okay, so we said, we are going to cut the budget drastically, we're going to cut 25%, you know, and there was some discussion, let's cut it 40%, but no, we're going to cut it 25%. And Matt, if you can bring up FP 103, I think it is, and, but the whole point of it, and they said, and then we even had, but we had a parking lot of, you know, it was our parking lot. So, if revenues did come in better, we were going to bring back some of those services that had been cut, like mulch delivery, et cetera, and, and maintenance techs, et cetera. We were going to bring everything back. So, we've got, so can you, and so, is, the financial policies FP 103? So, we also said at the time, it's under finance, it's under admin and then finance, you'll find the financial policies. So, at the time, we talked about it, and it was very clear, is that, you know, we don't really know what's going to happen, you know, and so we have to, so we amended our policies with number two, and we said elasticity is a goal that ensures the city is in a position to react and respond to changes in the economy and new service challenges without measurable financial hardship. That was our goal, we wanted to be elastic. Budget and Finance Committee says yes, and we are going to meet monthly, we're going to adjust monthly, we're going to work together and resolve these things, because we don't know, we want to bring back things. So, budget was, you know, budget's approved, et cetera, time goes on, and then there's, you know, as it's that start of a new year, calendar year, and then we have new committee members, new committee chair. This committee, it was, it was, had a different feel about it, and they weren't, it wasn't a monthly congenial, let's work together on this, I, you know, of a review, that didn't happen, for whatever reason, I don't know, I'm not here to judge or anything. I don't know what happened, I wasn't, I watched some of the meetings, but after a while, I couldn't watch them anymore. So, so I'm not sure what happened, but what did, I know what happened, though, in one way, council came in and started approving the parking lots, and in fact, they probably approved $200,000 to $300,000 worth of parking lot items, maybe more, I, you know, I just did a quick look at it, added them up quickly, and it was close to 300,000. That, those were council approved. Now, what happened, let's go back through, and let's get the big picture here. So, we've got a budget here, it's this amount, okay? And then, and then what happened is that council said, okay, we're going to add more to that budget, or more items, that you're going to have to spend more for, like 200, 300, or 400,000 dollars worth, but your budget still stays like this. The budget didn't move, there was no change in our budget at the time, no adjustments made, with the expectation that we would have a budget amendment. And at the time, we were not doing budget amendments with each council decision, so the budget didn't change. So, then what happens at the end of the year, you've got overruns, and woo, man, you've got tempers up, everybody's excited about all of these overruns. What really happened, what people are forgetting in this process, that even though we added $300,000 of council decisions extras to that budget, our staff still came under budget by $750,000, $750,000, with the additional $300,000. And here we are, it's like, now we're here in this acrimonious situation where people are calling about doing punitive, you know, disciplinary actions, et cetera, and frankly, it's surprising to me. I'm going like, wow, we should be celebrating, we had, we have this budget surplus because they managed the budget. Now, did they manage line item by line item? No, they did not, and that was a violation. Now, there was a statement made, and it was made in budget and finance, and I've asked for backup, and it was made in the council two weeks ago, that state and local laws were broken, and no one's been able to show me any state and local law, and I believe they were referring to FP 105, if you could pull that up, section six. Now, policies are not statutes, that's not a law, you know, this is a policy, but can you do disciplinary action with the policy? Yes, you can. So, let's go and look at, I think what it's talking about is item number D, but first, let's look at item number B. It says, department heads are responsible for managing their budgets within the appropriated budget. Okay. A lot of discussions that I've heard is city administrator, when it's actually the department head. So, let's focus on what our policy actually says, our department head. Now, let's look at D, says, budget adjustments within a fund that makes changes to individual line items within the same department of $500 or less that do not increase the total department appropriation shall be approved before the funds are expended by the department head and the city administrator and reported to city council. Now, I interpret that to mean, if you are one penny over your budget, your line item budget, before you spend it, you need to get approval by the city administrator, and you have to report it to us. That's how I interpret that. Now, does anyone here think that's like nuts, you know, one penny over? So, but that is our policy. Now, does it fit with the elasticity? No. Okay, so that's where we come. So, let's look at an example, and Chief, I'm going to pick on you just a little bit. Let's look at budget, the police department budget. Let's look at budget, uh, the police department budget. In the budget amendment. I'm picking on you just a minute, just. Um, the actual dollars, yes, it's in the backup, it's the actual dollars of what was spent and what the amendment is. There it is. Basically, the police department was $58,000. Uh, they need an amendment for $58,000. They were not, as a department, they weren't over budget. But they had some line item adjustments. One of them is like in overtime. You know, there was some, there was turnover in the department and so other officers had to fill in and we had to pay overtime. And so, uh, so that's what we did. That's why it was over. Now, is that a bad thing? Was there malfeasance? No, no. Police, you know, the chief is doing his job. He's filling, he's gonna make sure our shifts are covered, our police are on the streets and we are safe as residents. He's doing his job. So, but what do we do about this problem? Uh, you know, I mean, and then, you know, if we go back to the problem, there's the other problem, if you go over 500 but not, and then 2500. Now, there is no solution if you go over 2500. There, you don't have any option. So let's say, Carolyn, let's, let's pick on you a little bit. Let's say we're working on the lift station and there's a big issue. All of a sudden, we've got this big sewage backup, you know? It's all over Stern's Lane. It's all over the hotel. It's everywhere. And you look at your budget and your repair and maintenance budget, you don't have any money to spend on it. And, you know, what do you do? And it's gonna be over $2500 anyway. And, you know, you call the mayor, he's in, maybe he's on vacation in Hawaii or something. Can't get rid of, you know, can't get him. So, so what do you do? Now, you can say, well, I can fix the problem or I, you know, and if I don't fix the problem, I'll probably get fired. And if I, you know, if I fix a problem, I'll go over budget. I could get disciplined, maybe, maybe fired, you know? What do I do? You know, it's like, this is a kind of a policy that doesn't make a lot of sense when it comes to running the city. We have to have that elasticity that the Budget and Finance Committee believed was important. Now, does that mean we don't have oversight? No, no, no. So, anyway, so that's the problem. Those, those were the types of things that were the problems. Now, what are the solutions? So one solution, let me find my solution page. One solution is that when we, as a council, that we, uh, when we make a change, that we automatically include a budget amendment at the time. And that has been happening. Uh, so we include that budget amendment right then and there. So we've already implemented that change. So most of those problems will go away because those are the really big numbers. So a second issue is, um, any oversights, uh, particularly, it seems like some of the oversights, some of the, uh, consternation was in the engineering. And that, I believe, is now being reported on a monthly basis. Carolyn, would you talk about those reports?
Yes, we are putting those in the CIP backup to say where we are, how much is spent, what, um, and I was working with, um, council member Carmona on a new kind of spreadsheet flow that shows you what was budgeted, what was the, what's the cost, what remains in engineering. And then hopefully, when we go into construction, we would have the same kind of, um, items in that thing. So you can kind of see where the funds are going and how much is spent.
So we can track that as a council, as, and all residents can track it because it's gonna be in the council agenda packets. So, and they should be posted on our website and so everybody can see that. And so we'll have that, we can see that oversight. Um, the third issue is, uh, PO system. There is a, uh, I understand, Sylvia, you can chime in on this, that you have implemented a much more robust, uh, PO system. And if you could do that, chime in and tell me, explain what that is.
Yes, um, essentially creating tranches. So MIP does have a, uh, PO component. It has not been used since 2009. And what that does is essentially put in some stopgap measures to prevent overruns on some specific items like supplies. If we have a $15,000 supply budget, it's divided by four. A PO is given for that first tranche. When that first tranche is, um, empty, we move on to the second tranche, so on and so forth, so that we prevent some of the overruns. Additionally, the department heads are given their budget report every two weeks as checks are run. When they submit their invoices, and we've moved to an electronic, um, PDF PO system, when they submit their invoices, they have to verify that they checked to their budget, they check the date of the budget report, and there are sufficient funds to pay for that purchase.
Okay, thank you. So we have, in the last, I guess, months, put in all of these types of systems in to better handle any type of, uh, adjustments. Uh, but there will still be line item problems. Uh, as long as we have that policy, we will, there will expect, you know, chances are there will be times when that is spent over a penny. So it is, it will happen. Um, but I, I am curious and I'm glad that, uh, that you came back, uh, our chair, because I'm curious on what solution you have for this? If you don't mind sharing?
But can, uh, Chip, can you go, or Charles, can you go up to the microphone, please?
Is there a button? No, thanks. Uh, solution number one, actually enforce our financial policy. Now it's on? Okay. Number one, actually enforce our financial policies.
So are you saying you want, when a department head spends a penny over, you want them written up?
Do not twist my words around, please.
That's what I'm, I'm clarifying. I'm not twisting. I'm clarifying.
There will, of course, always be occasions when we have to pay a bill right away because an emergency has come up or some other thing. These are not the things that are upsetting the Finance Committee. The number one issue I would raise here is what happened with engineering costs during the past year? We started out with a budget of $11,250. Before we knew it, we had spent $100,000. And I find it hard to believe that those expenses were things that we came up as emergencies and had to be paid immediately and couldn't be dealt with. That doesn't make sense to me. I don't, I can't see any reason why these things did not come up to council and to the mayor for approval, which many of those expenses did not. That was, that is what frustrates the Finance Committee. That is the kind of issue that we are raising. No one is complaining about the fact that we had to pay overtime to the police. Of course that happened. Of course that needed to be taken care of. That is not an issue here. Some of the other things you raised are not issues here. They are obfuscating the actual issue of what is going on here.
So if you pick and choose, when you have a policy and say, I'm gonna enforce here but not there, you have to look at, you know, I'm gonna put my old HR hat on and you have to look at, well, why are you doing that? What kind of motivation's there? You have to be consistent in your delivery and your, in your ma, in your policies. And so what are you, are you suggesting that we're not consistent or what? Tell me, tell me, help me.
I'm suggesting that our policies are not being followed when they should be followed. That when, when these, some of these big ticket items, like these engineering expenses come up, they are not coming before council and mayor for approval. Council and mayor meet every two weeks. Susan Durso described this very eloquently in her letter that you wrote. You know, to take away that approval basically completely subverts the budget process.
So let's.
And I, also, I can't understand why, if there's a sudden emergency thing, why council can't be, can't be, uh, can't be notified of that.
So if sewage is le, leaking everywhere?
You're gonna fix it right away.
Absolutely.
No one is complaining about that kind of thing. Well, we're complaining about things that, that obviously are things that can be planned and understood in advance, not coming to council and not following our financial policies. There's a very clear distinction between those two things.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Bushfield?
I have a number of thoughts there. So I was definitely in the meetings where we kind of reified that elasticity, um, language and was very much adamant that like, we make sure that we, like, even make it more so, like, we needed to be responsive. I remember that the specific thing was that it felt a little bit too doom and gloomy for me. And I was hoping for, um, you know, that there was gonna be more dynamism. So we needed to like, have a little bit more rose colored glasses and like, hope that maybe the recover would be faster. Totally. And so we changed that to be like, let's make sure that we're, you know, we're off in both directions and that'd be great. You know, we can move. Um, and then it's awesome that we like are setting sales tax receipt records and now we've got a huge surplus. That's great, you know, like, um, and, but where things got acrimonious, where frustrations were inaccuracy and the failure to follow policy. And again, I think that there's like a lot of this, um, false equivalency here. Oh, and another thing just before that. I did mention that I thought that violating our financial policies routinely on, intentionally was a, may be a violation of state and local law. Um, I got that information from the kind of a career public finance person on the committee. I, I'm not a DA and like, if we're choosing like which DA we shop this to, um, that would probably be relevant information, but let's not go there at all. Like, I, I don't want to.
Yeah, I totally get that.
But again, like, our process is broken and it has not been changing. What, it sounds like all of a sudden it is miraculously. That's great. So since July, we were saying, can we please try to get like, could stop these overruns? Because we kept being presented. And again, the issue was engineering where, and, and it was not even like within a department. It was the city administrator's engineering desk that she personally did were the ones that the, that the budget, Budget and Finance Committee was upset about, that she did it on purpose. And then she would say, oh, no, we can't put any blocks in the way of people doing this because we don't know how to manage POs. And somehow saying that there was absolutely no way that we could control a budget. That caused a lot of consternation. It's like we're saying like, well, what is the correct answer to this? The answer I see is B. And it was like, well, actually, we don't know B because B is probably nonsense. And we're like, well, if we don't know the actual number here, how can we manage our finances? How can we be a city? Um, and that's been the root of the frustration here. So these steps are all great steps and we'd love to see all of them done. Like, that sounds wonderful.
Yeah, me too.
But I think we can do a little bit better and make sure that if those are the steps, like, I want to make sure that we tighten down on the accountability because these policies have been abused.
Okay, I wanna, I wanna, uh, add one more item here. And I was, again, I'm gonna try to just reiterate, reiterate. I was on the budget and finance for five years. And I went to every meeting and all of that stuff. And I, and what happened in that process, and this is under, uh, Michael Francis, he was the chair. And he, um, his big, uh, issue is that he wanted a very accurate budget. And so he was, and his word is granularity. We need granularity. And what happens is that let's break everything out. Instead of salaries, we have salaries, we have overtime, you know, we have a line for dental, we have a line for vision, we have a line for TMR benefits, you know? We're practically have a line for upper dental and lower dental, you know? I mean, it's like, it is, it is crazily broken out into line items because we wanted that granularity. So when, when it came budget time, we could predict that budget with as much accuracy as possible. I mean, we sat, we would sit there in our, in these committees and say, okay, you know, should we put 2,500 toward library card reimbursements or should it be 2,000? Alfonso, you probably remember some of those conversations, you know? And we would go on and on about those. Um, and then what we would do is have department chairs come in and they would come in and say, this is my budget of what I need. And we would say, gosh, you know, do you really need that much in that line item? And could you squeeze out maybe another couple thousand? And so we, and they would say, well, sometimes they would be adamant, no, we, no, can't do it. And sometimes they say, uh, okay. Depending upon the situation, is that an accurate description, Carolyn? Yes. And so what happens is that, and then the Budget and Finance Committee were like, oh, man, you know, we saved 40,000 out of the budget, you know, pat ourselves on the back, then we go home. Uh, we weren't accountable. We didn't have to live up to it. Even though we cut their budget at times, we didn't have to make it happen. We didn't have to react to situations. Nobody came back to us and said, well, you know, they cut that budget, but, you know, I tried, but, you know, I wasn't very effective in getting my ideas across or, or maybe they didn't hear me, you know, or didn't think my ideas were valid or whatever, my budget, you know, analysis. And so for whatever reason, you know, but we, we were a congenial group though. We did not come back and say, you know, let's have, you know, discipline, let's do maximum dis, we didn't do that. We said, okay, you know? And in fact, what we did is like, how do we make that budget better? We probably got even more granular, you know? And so we have made this, you know, in, in the private world, what we do is we, uh, we pad our budgets. You know, we learn, we learn is, you know, I remember my boss saying, you know, you haven't, you haven't spent that budget, you know, this year. Budget's coming up, you're gonna lose it if you don't spend it. And I'm like, okay, I better go spend it, even though I didn't need to. So you learn these little tricks. I don't want that to happen. I want realistic budgets and I want people to work, I want our staff working for that. But I don't want them to feel that punitive things will happen to them if they don't follow that. And so that's my, you know, that's kind of where I'm coming from. I am not interested in a lot of punitive action. And I'm not interested in things coming out as in words spoken like fraud and that type of thing. What we had was an incredible surplus and we should be dancing on the tables. We had a great year despite, despite COVID, despite a freeze, despite all of that anxiety and lack of staff and turnover. Oh my gosh, it was, it was a year I never want to live through again, you know? And we were all stressed, we were stressed as parents, we were stressed as, as business people. It was a difficult year, but our staff hung in there and they performed miraculously. Now, there is the, the, the big elephant though, is the engineering. Uh, now, we did discuss this in a council meeting, oh gosh, I should have gone back and listened to that back, I would say, hmm, September or so, does that, does that sound right? With the task orders and that type of thing. Do you remember that, Mark?
It was in the fall. I don't remember the specific council meeting.
Yeah, I don't remember. We did discuss that and we had some concerns there and we addressed that. Uh, and frankly, it was, uh, it was, uh, this was something that we were all concerned about and we did, you know, we did discuss this as a council. So we weren't, it's not that, we weren't unaware of it. And the other process that I understand that happens is before we have, we also have engineering task orders, that is, that are, uh, signed. Is that correct? Is that, and how does that process work?
That's, that's correct. You have received a packet every single engineering task order for every single bill has been signed by Mayor Bruner or has been signed by Mayor, pardon. All of those task orders were.
Sylvia, just as a, just as a correction, because when I looked through the backup that was sent, um, I saw a number of task orders that were unsigned. And so we need copies of the signed versions of those. I also saw, saw the amendments that you had signed, at least one of the amendments.
I resent an email with the, the rest of the task orders, Mayor. I don't know if you opened that.
Yes, I did. And, and there's, I have a, a list of task orders that, that are in that backup that are unsigned. So I think council needs to see the signed versions of those. And then there was one task order that showed your signature.
So I think we need to investigate that. I think we need to look into that and see what happened there. Uh, I think there was some miscommunication on council direction maybe, uh, and maybe understanding. So again, it's not meant for any type of punitive thing. We just want to get to the bottom of it and put in other safeguards to make sure that we have a good process in place. I think that's, and I believe that's where we all want to go. We want to have a good process so we can move forward from this. Now, one last point that I want to make. If anyone is concerned about any malfeasance or fraudulent behavior, which, you know, as council member Rosengard and I, we worked through as much as we could, we followed every transfer of funds, every type of stuff. We reviewed the accounts payable process. Uh, I believe six pairs of eyes looks at invoices before it goes to checks, uh, that are signed by the mayor and by the chief. Uh, so there, to me, it is the, and as what I understand from the auditors, that is the best process that we can have in a small city with small. that we can have in a small city with small staff. So I believe this is a good process. So I don't believe there was any fraudulent, there's any money missing or anything or anything like that or any projects were even done or started without without some sort of understanding that this is where we want to go as the council. Now, did we dot all our i's and cross all our t's? I don't think so. I think we missed a few. So that's a process we need to clean up. Last point. There was misinformation at the last meeting. The auditors will not start on our account until our books are closed and so we can sit here and we can argue, we can be do whatever we we need to do but they will not start on the audit until our books are closed and the only way we can close our books is to finalize this amendment. And so these funds have been spent, there is the big savings, our savings, our bank accounts are much bigger and we need I think we need to get this amendment passed and focus on the future on how we can do better as a city, as our staff and our staff, so.
Councilor Lischfield and we also have members of the public that wish to speak to this as well as at least one open gov comment. I know that Charles Young spoke so his comments in there but we also have one other resident that posted an open gov that we'll we'll get to as well. Councilor Lischfield?
Yeah, I definitely to keep this brief, so we can absolutely close our books without passing this budget amendment. We don't need to do it.
That's not what we are.
But they can be closed without moving like they can just be closed with a negative balance in some accounts, can't they?
It can but it might be a finding on the audit.
Right, so the auditor is going to tell us that we went over budget on some things. Cool.
That might be a material representation or whatever so I don't believe we want that on our audit.
I would like that from I would like research on that before I would support any of that. Also, as far as the sweeps in general like I'm very much like section B of this and in general I'm very much in favor of getting money into the general fund because a dollar in the general fund is worth more than a dollar in the other funds. Totally get it like I'm all about like getting money to where it's most valuable. I do have a couple reservations here that I think stem from a lack of trust in other parts of the process and so I do feel reservations on that. I don't know kind of where I would vote on it and I would take some other input from from other folks on how they feel but I'm concerned about doing that. I think it would not be a material change, I think we could remedy it in any case because we've got large budget in those accounts anyway but it's something that I would undertake with caution at this point. But this time I'd love to hear from other folks besides me. Thanks.
Mayor Potem.
Well, I think then was an excellent exposition, congratulations. I think then how they explain some of this history. Everybody when he's reading the book, they have some opinion about what is in that book. The only thing that they teach me in my home was then I have to follow rules and that was very strong in my home. When I was working, I tried to follow that. When I came to this country, it was very difficult because everything is in writing. Everything you have writing, 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 policies, policies. So when we are looking rules, we are looking as a citizens who are our leaders. Who is moving the city? Well, it's supposed to be citizens but sometimes the decision of five people sitting here in these tables, they are taking we are taking the decisions of all the community and sometimes I think that the perception that we have of the things not necessarily is the best and we can be the best persons but not necessarily is the best. Why I say that? It's true, always when I was in that meetings in budget and finance for two years, I have a lot of discrepancies, the same that now I have. Maybe I am not simple but for me they teach me that two plus two is four. I don't have two plus two, seven and I cannot agree with that. This is this is my logic but now my rules and we say no, no, the rules, we can go around the rules. No, if we have a rule, we need to follow the rules and after that we need to put in one scale, how bad is that? But no, no omit something that is wrong or erase it. So we need to analyze and when we say analyze, in this case, they mentioned the budget. What's true? We start with a bronze, silver and gold budget. Oh, how difficult if that was bronze was the lowest was to the bone, no money. So we cut the budget but little by little we start looking then that prediction of the money was coming. It wasn't. So at the mid of the year, we saw. So at the mid of the year, we saw more money in the budget and at that moment when I tried to say that, we start in October 1st, 2019 and in March, April, May, we start looking then the balance was coming up in money. So the money show up. Now, what happened that? At that time, they occur some of the first budget adjustment that we made and we discussed previously and that was June, July, August, then they passed that. Now, what happened from from that to the end? At the end, this is than now we have there and when we have that, we are looking then how much money they have and how much money they was over the budget of before the budget and these guidelines, they say then you need to spend only if you have the money. They are the rules. You first you need to have the money in order to do a PO and when we are doing POs, we have the rules purchase authorization, purchase authorizations. Yet that purchase authorization is true. Sometimes is the supervisor, the head of department, but always is the city administrator. In some cases, is the mayor and in others, the city council. So in this case, we don't need to put in one corner somebody and some people hitting the table is good and other people is bad. No, it's a violation and in this violation, how we will analyze and professional. We have feelings that at this moment we need to be cold and with our brain and with our brain we would say okay, from 1,000 to 3,000, how many? From this, I was watching them and they have a discussions, no, it's only 37,000, no, it's 400,000, no. I was looking and they are 102 operations, 102 operations. 62 of that operations, they pertain to salaries, employees, adjustment, but 40 of them, they didn't do nothing. They made that violation. It's 40, it's not one, it's not two. So this is then we need to start looking. So we have to go and we need to sit down, we need to analyze, what is the situation? We need to bring also our city administrator and and she needs to work with us. At this moment, I have two excellent members of the city council that they are crazy for eight days working, looking for information, hearing information then to support some something and this is good but why we don't sit down together and we start looking to bring solutions and to set a plan? We can set a plan together. This is a community common, common, no disagreements, no separations. So we need to have common grounds. Now, punitive, you cannot you cannot win nothing with that. We need to work together and if something is wrong, okay, you are wrong with this and please try to correct and change and that's it. It's not that you we will fire somebody for something. We don't need to look in that way now, believe me. We can go and go more and more things but I suggest then we need to put to we need to be really to sit down together with the city administrator and later the city administrator, she needs to let us know because she has behind the people then they need to follow this, it's not only her. But she needs to give it to us that. She needs to have a compromise because it's part of her job and our job is to start watching then they follow rules. That's it. So Mr. Mayor, I suggest then we would set some way that we can discuss and to find solutions, bring that solutions, set a plan and try to put in action. This is this is this is then then I think would be the best. Perhaps if we will go to the next subject in Agenda 14, would be also difficult but because at this moment, last night I was look looking the budget and looking the budget, I say we purchased one land, we purchased that 64 something Brody, $1 million, we need to do budget adjustment because this is this is funds, $1 million fund and we didn't put that in the budget. Yeah, but no, yeah, but I know that we did but if you will go at this moment to to open gov, it's it's then we didn't do that. Well, this is then I tried to say last night I saw insurance liability, we are bad, $49,920. Vehicle insurance, $357,000. Bullet proof best, $930,000. Sales and use tax, $276,000. So this is why I think that we need to work with the group because we are doing at this moment and we try to discuss something that is still, we are doing mistakes. I hope that I am wrong but I saw this last night in open gov and when I saw that in open gov, I say I need to bring that and I need to study. So in conclusion, because we spend a lot of time with this, why we are not more constructive? We need to hear the the citizens, we need to hear also this is why, this is their role and 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 if they express their feelings, I remember five years ago to stand up in that place and some people here and one person maybe in the center, four minutes, no, you cannot be talking more and if and making rebuttals, rebuttals and rebuttals, they were asking and questioning, asking and questioning was so authoritarian. No, we need to let the public to express and it's their position and it's our position.
Thank you. So I just what I'm trying to trying to take all the feedback and trying to decide like what is the best path forward? I mean I've heard suggestions from Councilor Lischfield and it sounds like Councilor Potem Carmona that both of you would like to have a dedicated session to be able to work with staff on questions about budget, questions about this budget amendment and and actually have like a you know a forum where we can do that you know a working session, whatever we want to call it where we can just dedicate a time to do so. There's you know I think that the discussion is kind of tied into all of our financial policy decisions and processes that we can work to improve. We also have a budget and finance committee where we can go to for recommendations and advice, that's another thing that's been coming up in conversations and topics a lot as well if we want to utilize them. What I guess Mike where I'm at in terms of this is that it's not unusual for us to have underruns and overruns, right? I think we we all agree that that's not the unusual aspect that that we're dealing with. I think that last year we had we want to put and we expressed this and we are starting to do this but we can do a better job of this, we want to put in place more oversight because council is in particular wants to be able to see when we have things that are trending towards overrun that we can maybe step in and say we need to rethink what we're doing here, right? That's a that's a concern, right? Before we get to the point where it's already overrun in certain areas. That you I was on budget finance for several years, that used to be a budget and finance you know thing where we they would go through and say it's this is looking like you know we're we're starting to exceed here, what you know what's the situation and and that's kind of like you know the committee would would work on that. I think we are still you know from a council, really there I see issues with our financial policies, you know, I think it's very valid to raise the point of if we're going by the letter of the financial policy then is that really realistic? We do have the financial policies also allow for emergency purchases so there's also some language in there. I think in general there's like maybe some overlap and some things that could get cleared up but I think what what council is expressing is that we want to know and keep track of and and make sure that we are confident that you know if we're going to need to make a purchase that we the council is informed, that we provide feedback and if it requires a budget amendment that we we do it in process rather than waiting till the end of the year and I think that's that's something that you know going forward we're trying to address. My concern and I think this is echoed by committee members, we last year and the year before that started to have a larger issue with services that the city purchases from engineering, from IT and from legal and those areas in particular are they're not purchase orders you know then in the sense that they are a contract we approve and then they're an hourly rate and then they're utilized based on council requests in some cases for legal, they're approved for CIP in some cases or they're inferred from you know conversations. We need a better way of managing and tracking those if council and I think this is what everybody wants on council is not to exceed what we targeted for those areas without you know essentially council saying yes, we are we're comfortable with that. I don't think we're there yet in terms of the data that we're getting you know in terms of what what we need to be able to see and where we can access the data on a regular basis for those areas. The other big areas in terms of this like or like where we have overruns or underruns, I think a lot of these are very much within sort of like the bounds of what we'd expect for a department that we're managing this to the line item. The another big chunk of this is obviously like the America Rescue Plan which is like $100,000 of this you know particular amendments you know and so if we if we wanted to spend some time going through this which it's it's hard to do that in this in our regular council meetings, it would it might be useful, right? Certainly to get you know council to to get you know assurances that we are either putting the mechanisms in place to get the information we need, following up on questions where there are some concerns or delegating that to committees so that they can assist us, right? Where we're not in the details and saying you know why is this over by you know X amount? So that being said, I'm supportive of that if we want If we want to meet separately and have a, a discussion, rather than, you know, adjudicating this now. I know we've had a lot of residents in, you know, that want to provide feedback in this process too. I think it's a good idea for us to set aside some time and dedicate this. And I'm open to, to doing what we need to do as far as like, sitting down and, and working through this. We want to spend a day having a working session, or whatever it is, just like Councilor Rees and, and Councilor Rosen Garden did, you know, do that for the rest of council, if we need, if it needs to get to that level. That being said, you know, I, I want to make sure that, you know, council provides the direction, you know, to staff that they want for, for this. And it's not to say we can't do anything with this budget amendment now. I don't think it's a priority to do it right now. I think that, you know, if we need to take the time to do that in the next couple of weeks, we can. I would like to open it up for residents who are here to speak to this issue, and also to read the open Google comments, so we capture that as well. With that, residents that may wish to speak to this, please go ahead and introduce yourself at the podium and make sure the microphone's on.
Thank you. Melissa Gonzalez, 26, Reese. I appreciate that everybody wants to work together to make a good solution. I think that's all we want to do in the city. I have to say I disagree with Councilmember Reese's characterization. I was sitting next to her for a lot of that time, and my experience was very different than hers. And I think that from the beginning, one of the reasons we had a seven hundred thousand dollars surplus, or whatever the number was, that was so high, was because the budget information that we got that led to so many staff firings was so off. And so there was, there was a long history of not good information coming. And I think that that was coming. And I think there's also a mischaracterization, because certainly other people besides these two council members were, were there. On finance, I know that Councilmember Carmona and Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Bruner, were also on the Finance Committee at that time. So there was a lot of people. I mean, the only person I think who, who hasn't had fairly recent experience of that is, is Councilmember Johnson. But anyway, I, I was there, and my experience of the information flow was very different. It was not just in the vacuum of, of the few things. So I, I do encourage council to look at all those flows, especially in all the contracts. And no, I had absolutely no expectation that they'd be somehow going to some other account. You know, if there's an aberration here, the aberration would be that someone has contracts that the city is giving money to, and we don't know what their other jobs are. That would be, be the place it would churn up. That we have a city administrator who has outside jobs. So we, and, and, you know, so we have no idea how that goes. And I'm not even trying to go there. But I am saying that it's, I don't ever think it's going to go to some bank account. That, that, I, I believe that those, those flows that, that you guys worked on, I never had a question.
Mayor, please step in.
Point of order.
Please step in, Mayor. Please step in.
Point of order, Councilor Reese.
I believe our decorum in the Code of Ordinance says you cannot make slanderous remarks. And you are basically saying...
Well, the honor.
I'm sorry?
You are saying that you're making a slanderous remark that the, some of our payments are going to our city administrators' companies?
No, I'm saying it's unethical for someone who has outside work to be having lots of contracts. That's what I'm saying, and that's in their contract. And, and we, and that's a known thing that is put out there.
So you are implying that could be considered slanderous, and that is not...
No.
That is not allowed in our Code of Ordinances.
I am not saying that it's slanderous. I'm saying that there's a conflict of interest.
Point of order.
I'm saying that there's a conflict of interest for outside employment. That's what I'm saying.
There is no conflict. The, the council has approved that, and it was known when I was hired. Mayor, please step in. This is ridiculous already.
So let, let's make sure that if we're making, if you're making statements, that you're clear about what statements you're making, and that we are adhering to our rules of decorum.
I'm happy to do that. But, but I do think that there should be a list of all the other jobs. I do say, I do, and, and I'll put that in as, as a request, if, if you just tell me where to put it. Thank you. But, but I'm, I'm going to go back to the, the...
You have about one minute left of public comments, according to our ordinances.
Thank you. But I've been interrupted through most of it. The engineering task orders, all that flow of contracts, that's where the problems were. And, and I asked repeatedly to get this information, couldn't get it as a council member. And, and they say, oh, it's backed, it's backed, it's backed. And I think that's the flow. And then we got to, and they said, it's always miscoding. It was always miscoding. And, and we got to, and they say, there's no problems here, it's perfect. But eighty-eight K later appeared. So those flows have never been done. So my experience is dramatically different than Councilmember Reese's. And, and the way that, the story that she told was not my experience of the story. And so those are the two things that I think need to be clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe also, do you wish to respond or, or provide? You were here, hand raised, Councilor Reese?
No, I was just going to see if the chair would like to, I wanted to amend the motion just a little bit, if the chair would be interested.
Certainly. Let me hear it.
So I would like to move that we approve this with a task force that studies our contract, I think you had a, a much better way of putting it than I did, but a contract process of how we, we have our contract services, how we pay them, how we track them, and that type of thing. So I would like to say that, that we put a task force together that actually looks at, looks at that and comes together with a recommendation on how to do that. Maybe you could put that nicer.
Maybe contractual and, and professional, professional services?
No, I mean, I think it could be a task force of council members, or it could be the Budget and Finance Committee, it could be whoever wants to, just somebody that, it could be staff. They make, they say, this is how, you know, we've studied it, this is what we want to do, and this is what we think we'll do, and this will show that everything's being done appropriately. So for future going forward, we can see that, and we all can sit back and feel comfortable with it. So...
You know, the auditor's going to look at this, and we're going to ask for him to look at every detail.
Do you want to add that, or should we wait for the auditor, or what are you thinking?
I'm thinking that if we have the auditor. Susanna, what would be your recommendation?
I would say to do whatever you guys feel most comfortable with.
Would the, can we ask the auditors to suggest a process of tracking that and controlling those expenses?
We can ask, but it might cost extra.
Okay, with that?
So there's a, you're, you're asking, so let me, let's, let's handle this where we can, we can orderly do it.
So can I chime in, please?
Go ahead, Sylvia.
Can I chime in on, on the process? I think, no, two big things. First of all, you do have a, you do have a process now that didn't exist before with the engineering, in the task orders, and the way the budget was formulated in a capital budget. You used to have capital expenses mixed in with your operating budget. That has been separated out. When I first came, Budget and Finance was asking for specific engineering fees per project. We couldn't provide that. Okay? That's, that's the first. So you have a process for engineering fees. The attorney's fees, same thing, there's a contract. And I think the budget report is more in line with what you're looking for. I welcome a task force who wants to look through the process improvements that we're putting in place. I welcome a task force to come and give an audit of the current procedures in place. I'll remind the council that I myself took myself off of the check signing, because the way you had it before, the same person who approved was the same person who signed the check. So many things have changed that aren't being brought to light here. But I welcome any kind of task force that wants to review what we're doing and what can, what can be improved. But I think that's better served with an internal, made up of some residents perhaps, made up of some portions of Budget and Finance, and members of council. I don't think that we need to pay a third party to do that.
Okay. So what you're saying, if I can ask a question, is that with the CIP now in place, with the tracking that's going on, with the monthly type of reports that are happening, and public works report, that that process is already in place? Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct.
Okay. So I withdraw my correction then.
Councilor Litchfield?
Yeah, thank you. So a couple of things. If I ever insinuated that I thought there was fraud or embezzlement happening, going on, I'd never intended to. I don't think the city administrator even wants to embezzle money from us. That seems like a nightmare. Like, I, I would never do that. What I'm, what's frustrating is kind of these information embargoes that it feels like we've had. So I got, in the last twenty-four hours, five hundred pages of engineering work that we've been asking for, for six months. I'm glad that I have it now, but I don't know why it took six months to get it. And that's what's been causing a lot of us a lot of frustration, is it's just like a lack of a proper information flow. And I think that that's best achieved by us sitting down together and saying, what are expectations? Who tells what? You know, it's awesome that six pairs of eyes see these POs before they get checks cut. That's great. It's shocking that a miscoding is such a frequent, you know, cause of problems if that happens, because in the policy that dictates that all these eyes see it, it says you have to write the code on the thing. So that should have been like sextuple-checked by the time it gets to a committee, and yet committee's finding these all the time. So I hope we fix it so much. But I, you know, I'm, I'm waiting.
I, I agree with you. I mean, I think that little issues like that are diff, are frustrating, you know, the coding and stuff. And we've had new employees and COVID, people working from home, and it's, it's, it has been a challenging year from what I can see. And I don't think that there's any, I think it's a training issue sometimes. I think it's some oversight issues, and maybe some communication issues. I do believe that we could probably do better. And maybe, Susanna, maybe you can speak to that a little bit. I mean, thoughts on your...
On the process improvements that we're making?
Yeah.
So a lot of it has been spearheaded by Sylvia at the request of council, specifically with the PO process that she was talking about earlier. She is, me, her, and our AP person, Lori, are all working together to start putting this in place. But it takes time and effort and learning new things. And Lori actually has, she's going to a training on Friday to learn about it. So she'll bring it back, and we'll start working on it this Friday. Well, next week. And we're trying to get everything in process as fast as possible because nobody wants to go through this again. This has not been easy for anyone. We're, I'm new, I'm still learning. Sylvia's still new too. We're still learning all of the things that people want. And it is our best intention to give you exactly what you want. So we're, we're working to, we're working towards that as best as we can.
Okay, thank you.
I do want to get back to public comments. If we want to, if, if you need to speak now, let's, let's go ahead and speak. If it can be held until after public comments, let's make sure we, we make sure we get through all those. So, okay. So back to public comments. If you wish to speak at this time, please step to the podium, and then we, I'll read in one comment we have from open Google.
Thank you. I'd like to address some of the things that have come up in the course of this, of this conversation, that I think are kind of unfair to the Budget and Finance Committee. I have been on the Budget and Finance Committee. This is now my fourth year. And like Councilmember Reese, I remember when it was more congenial, occasionally a little contentious, but I would say kind of pleasantly boring. And Councilmember Litchfield, who served on the Budget and Finance Committee last year, touched on some of the frustrations that have changed that dynamic. And I don't think that those, that, that is entirely the fault of the Budget and Finance Committee. The frustrations that we experienced are consistently getting bad information, where numbers, for example, just don't add up, or things are missing, where our requests are ignored or shuffled off to the side, or addressed in ways that don't actually, you know, address what we're asking for. Things get shuffled off for months, as, as Councilmember Litchfield gave it an example of. And this led to an increasing level of frustration among all the members of the committee, where if you listen to the, some of the meetings, a couple, on a couple of different occasions, different committee members who are no longer on there burst out in frustration because they couldn't take it anymore. So this is not the finance, Budget and Finance Committee being mean to staff or being unpleasant. This is a, a rising level of frustration that has been going on for more than a year. Because our requests get ignored, we get bad information, the things that we want communicated to council and mayor do not get communicated. Important information is often left off that we need to know, or should know, that only comes out after the fact. And I'll give you two examples. In the first, well, let me back up a couple steps on another thing. If you listen, go back and listen to the Budget and Finance meetings this year, you will hear me almost every meeting call out the things that are over budget, or going over budget, or in danger of going over budget, which were poo-pooed or dismissed almost every time I brought them up. Don't you worry your pretty little heads about that, we'll take care of that. Until we got to a point where we had a budget amendment of, I believe it was originally three hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars, of which a hundred seventy-three thousand dollars had already been spent. We got a second budget amendment after that, where we all looked at it and said, none of these nu, well, not none of these, many of these numbers here do not add up. This doesn't make any sense. And it came out that staff had put estimates in for these things because they didn't have all the invoices in yet. Yet that information was not provided to us. What is our reaction going to be when we see, here's a document where numbers simply don't add up? That should be the most basic thing in our finance. Oh, I'm sorry. That should be the most basic thing in our financial system, is that the arithmetic is right. And it's not an occasional typo here and there. It's almost every time we get something, things don't add up. When a second revision of this amendment came out, the numbers had changed dramatically. Of course, we're going to question that. Now, I found out again after the fact, months after the fact, when this had come out, I think, from Councilmember Rosen Garden, that a, a number of items had been miscoded and all had to be changed. Wouldn't that have been valuable information provided to the Finance Committee when this was presented? Wouldn't that have been valuable information to provide to City Council when this was presented? Wouldn't that have saved a lot of time and effort? Wouldn't that have engendered trust in the process, instead of eroding trust in the process? So I want to say our frustrations are real. And they're justified. We rejected making a recommendation on this because of both the violations of financial policy, which we think are important. And I think to say that this has always been happening is false equivalence. Go back and look at the budget amendments of previous years. They are for small amounts, maybe twenty to fifty thousand at the most. They are for minor items. They are a completely different thing from what has been happening in these budget amendments in this year. Saying it's always been happening is false equivalence. It is not the same. I don't have a problem with you actually passing this budget amendment. What we're asking you to do is to do something about fixing this process. It's great that we're hearing things about, that are supposed to fix this process. I haven't seen them in action yet. I would like to see them, I would like to see them work. I would like to see finance become, as I said, pleasantly boring again. But it's not. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Councilmember Rob Johnson?
Whatever.
Took a blank there. I was like, Robson?
So this, every time finance comes up, I am like, way in over my head. I can hook all this stuff up with like, in my sleep. But I rely on this other the days to kind of figure this out. And so when mom and dad are fighting, you know, it makes me think. Again, whole bunch of list of notes here. If, if two council members are going to split off and kind of go over the numbers and, you know, kind of make it right, you can pull in one of the dumbest people, and I'll, I'll be one of the two sets of eyes on there. And, you know, maybe some education will come along with it. The, when, when does the audit? When is it supposed to start?
Usually it starts in December. But we are a little behind right now.
No, that's cool. And if we, if we don't pass this, you said that it would just show that we were over budget, right?
It would end up being a finding on the audit, which would then impact our credit score as a city. So it would make it so we possibly couldn't, or would take more money to borrow money. It would be like a higher APR.
But we were over budget.
We were, but as long as it's passed by the time the audit happens,
Yeah.
it doesn't really matter. As long as it was, you know.
Is this a common thing, just to, like, we're rich enough that we can just paper over it?
It's $750,000 under, but we're line items, $37,000 where we had to go into our reserves, $37,000. That's what this is all about.
Okay.
So.
And this is common with...
Don't want to minimize that. It's not what this is all about, but yes.
Nope, I got it. Like, how long do we have to finish the audit?
I haven't exactly asked. I asked if there were any penalties for starting this late, and they said no. But I don't know if that answer changes the further we go.
And then there's, we need to start the budget. So if, if our accounting, you know, one person is still working on the audit when our budget needs to start, you know, there's a schedule to these things.
It almost seems like on one side, we could be affected by close now under, over budget, or we can pass this and just pretend, I know we're not pretending that anything went, not, anything didn't go wrong. But I feel like delaying it slightly, I know they probably don't weigh this, but kind of makes us look really good, because like, we want to know what the actual answer is. I don't know. I'm going to take off some notes here. The, the task orders that we had back in, it was September or whatever, and I think there were four of them, was that a solution to the, the engineering overruns?
So there were task orders that we had for Sunset Trail and Lone Oak improvements, Lovegrass, Valley Creek. I think those are three task orders that we, we had back in September, October. And those are CIP projects, and they were task orders specifically for the engineering portion of the CIP projects that we, you know, essentially said, Freeland, Turkey, we're going to support these three CIP projects. And if that's what you're referring to, I think that's what, those three task orders that came before council at that time.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Yeah. On October, October, October 5th, 2001, we approved three areas for engineering in Sunset Trail, Lovegrass, and Valley Creek. That was the day. We approved three of them. And the other, and was one amendment, was on November. But for us, this is the only that we have at that time. I have other previous, but this only pertained to engineering. The, the CIP would be over $1 million with these projects. But engineering would be, 128, would be around $140,000. So.
This is probably the, the roughest, I'm thinking of like, roughest edges in our entire city right now is kind of around budget, and particularly around this right here. I, I don't particularly want to spend all day in like a work session, but it really feels like we have to. And may I, may I grab this piece of paper? I, I would really like to know, to match the inputs and the outputs, to know, everything that failed, this sounded really good, all of these, you know, solutions. And I want to know what the delta is, like, what continues to fall through the cracks. Again, like, the, the two examples that we had about like, police overtime because of vacancies from just people leaving, or COVID, or whatever, that, that was one example that was used. And the other one was a hypothetical, like sewage spilling everywhere, like, you know, totally. But, I mean, they were, they were emergencies. And I, I think I remember just like, all the overruns, and it's just like, you're just like presented with like, it's like, here's the bill, you drank all that, and it's like, I don't know, I, I do a lot of freelance, and I do, you know, I'm like an hourly person. And I let people know really early when I'm running up against it. And I make sure to point out like, well, and these are the reasons why, like, you added this feature. There's no, we don't do, it's time materials. There's not a lot of like, change orders and stuff like that. It's just like, okay, well, this is, this is something different, and I, it's going to take me 20 more hours. Is that cool? And I, it just like made my eyes water that, I don't know, that we just got presented with these bills, and it's like, what are we supposed to do here? Like, just, we have to pay it, and now it sucks. But, but like, if we have time to stretch out the, the audit process a little bit longer, again, I don't particularly want to spend it in a work session. But this is, I don't know, it's a mess. And I think it might be worth it for us to just like, sit down for the day and work it out. That's a bum, bummer, but.
Councilmember Rosengarten, you had your hand raised, and Rob, just make sure you're finished.
Yes. Thank you. Carolyn, have you had a chance to look at any of the engineering fees and relate to if all of these engineering fees were approved?
I have not had a chance to go back through the past, what would have happened prior to this. I mean, I have a good handle on everything that we've done since October, since I kind of came into overseeing this, but I have not had a chance to go over and do that now. That being said, I did just check one. So May 4th, 2021,
Yep.
council approved the Sunset Trail, Lone Oak, Jones Road drainage kind of project, which increased the engineering task order by $10,000. And then if you go back through the minutes, it says council will have, a budget amendment will have to be made for this. So it, it kind of speaks to the situation, I think, that Councilmember Reitz was talking about, where a lot of things were happening, but the budget amendments don't, didn't necessarily follow at the same time, like we are doing now. So we are addressing that by what we are doing now, saying, okay, here's what we're asking for, and the budget will be amended at the same time. So that's the only one I've been able to go back through and check. If you guys want me to start looking through those and research that,
I really would like that.
I will definitely do that.
Now, there's no reason we can't pass the amendment and still continue talking about this, and still get all the details behind it. Because as we already have shared with you, we have looked at the bank statements. There is no money going anywhere else. It is paid to the engineer. We just need to now get that information behind there as to what each line item detail of the engineering is. That's it.
All right. So let's see, we've got, Councilmember Reitz, I think you had your hand raised, and then Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I, I just would really like to get this passed tonight. I mean, I don't think delaying it is going to give us further information that's going to add any more clarity to the problem. And I think it will just delay the audit, and things will get really scrunched up there when it comes budgeting again. There may be, it will, I would like this budget process to be as smooth as possible, so we eliminate anything going forward. So, and I really, you know, we've gone through this now three times, and I,
Twice.
A fourth time, a third time is not going to change anything. It, it's, it doesn't change anything. And so I really think we should just have the vote and just move on.
Mayor Protem?
Ren, thank you, Mayor. I think that everybody recognized that we made some violations. So everybody's agreeing. Now, when I was looking, August, on August 3rd, August 3rd, City Council, we discussed the first budget adjustment. And in that budget adjustment, say, the Mayor Bruner had questions regarding the budget amendment and existing budget savings. The City Council, at that time, they vote. And in that discussion, we came with this point, they say, discussion of expenses including engineering task orders, and what is the policy for approving expenses that were not budgeted or have gone over budget. So in that sentence, only we let that open. We didn't do nothing. And later, we say, vote, and they say, we approve. Four yes, one no. But we heard, we have only the discussion. And that was August 3rd, in that minute. We came now on January, with the 2nd. And with the 2nd, we started with discussions. Now, it's very easy to come back and say, well, we don't need a task force. We need to approve today this, and maybe in the following weeks, we will be doing something. No. No. At this moment, we need to recognize that we are doing some violations. And we need to put that. Now, we are looking if we will do some settings about some plan, how that will be working much better. But you try to be ahead. What are you doing? What did you start doing since two weeks ago? What did you do that? No. That came from the public, from the committee. They were asking for help, and we were losing the point. And still at this moment, losing the point. Why? Because we didn't follow city policies. That were, they were violated, and we need to say that. It's an statement. And when we say, at this moment, then, well, we will do that later. No. Perhaps we will approve this, but that doesn't means that we will be checking that. Because always, they try to give it to us, the pressure. What is the other side of the pressure? The audit. We will have the audit. And if we have the audit, we will be losing this, or we will be losing that. I would like to know if in the audit, these guys, they will be honest, and they would say they didn't follow city policies. I would like to see that. Because if that is the case, since years ago, as some of the members, they say that they were doing that violations, why they didn't say nothing? So why we have that rules? So please, put that serious. Please, member of the council, it's very easy to pass, pass, pass. Sometimes we need to, we need to be strong, and we need to say, how that will be, perhaps I am not totally agree with other member. That's why I am not totally agree, because we have to fix something that is still broke. This is, and this is important. So please, don't let that so easy. Because if, at this moment, they will go and they will vote, then I will suggest that we will have that in the agenda today, that we specific, that we violate some city financial policies. I would like to see that. I wish that we will have, one day that we will sit, we will sit down and we will discuss. That was my intentions since last, last two weeks ago, to go to executive session, or to be sitting and discussing. Mr. Mayor, is the third or fourth time with the telephone and with other things, I don't know if it's legal, that other members of the council, they have that distraction? Is, is possible that? Mr. Attorney, Mrs. Attorney?
Can you?
Yeah, it's one question.
Can you ask your question?
I am asking the question to the attorney. Is, is the fourth time with expressions, or that they are using the telephone when I am talking? Is, is correct that they are doing that, members of the council?
Oh, that council members should not be using their telephones when?
Because they are using the telephone.
When?
You were using the telephone. Do we have a camera?
I use my telephone because it has a calculator, and I'm doing math, as we're talking about a budget item.
So it's legal?
Right here is my.
Or, or we can request information, because if, if information that is on the table, we cannot do that?
I can't do math on a calculator?
So if there's a policy or an ordinance that talks about not having your phones on the dais, then that should be followed. But if there is none,
There is none.
then you can have, then council can have phones on the dais.
So that, I mean, yeah, I don't think there's a specific policy that, that, but we could consider that as far as like, we need to have more, less distraction, I guess.
It's very easy to say that we need to respect ourselves, that we need to have cohesion between the group. And it's very difficult. This looks like when, when you have a distraction group, then somebody is talking, and it's a lack of respect. It's very difficult. Because two or three times, I raise my hand, and I know that you were looking, but I am quiet. I, I am quiet. But not necessarily, I am looking the same. And I let you to think with all that you want to think. But for me, it's a lack of respect. And I am 60-something years old, and I learn rules, and I learn, I learn respect. I hope, then you will give it to me the same.
My apologies if I did miss your, your hand raised earlier, Mayor Protem. I've been, I, I do sometimes miss that, and that's my, you know, sometimes I do get distracted myself. My apologies. I believe it's Councilmember Rosengarten, then Councilmember Litchfield is the order I saw. So Councilmember Rosengarten.
Carolyn, if you can bear with me, I'm going to do a lot of reading, and it's going to take some time. So if you can write down the minute you hear engineering or task order, okay? So the first council meeting was 10/20/20. And we spend funds in the amount of $10,000, and general funds in the amount of $21,000 for a total contract amount for $31,470, not to exceed. And that's for SFC. Then on 10/30, a new public work director was hired. On 11/18, minutes are labeled wrong, on 12/15, 2020, FY 2019, 2020 budget amendment, SFC general fund amount approved, $20,690. On 1/5, 2021, text pool signatures are acknowledged as Mark Bruner, Mayor, Karen Medikas, Mayor Protem, Sylvia Corilio, City Administrator Len Carter, Chief of Police. That was text pool. 2/2, 2021, motion made to approve scope of work for up to $178,500 for Sterns Lane Lift Station, 1/7/8/500, excluding the access road maintenance and pumping hoist. Same date, 2/2, 2021, executive session, approval of Teracon to review the lining and leaking of the city pond by police building, not to exceed $15,000. 3/16 and 3/17, 2021, consider an act on temporarily reinstating community programs for assistance to residents following the recent winter storms, adopted tree, brush chipping, et cetera. In, let's see, this is just a note for myself, on 4/6, 2021, consider an act on approving the financial policies, FP 101 and FP 103, again, not for Public Works, for 20, 2021, consider an act on agreement with Kara, Kara Soft, or Kara, I can't pronounce it, Kara Soft, for the creation of a city website for an amount not to exceed $29,387.07, approved unanimously. For 20, 2021, Agenda Item 12, consider an act on the purchase of replacement police equipment that has exceeded its life expectancy, including police in-car radios, in-car videos, body cameras, and portable radios for amount not to exceed $122,237.93, approved unanimously. 5/4, 2021, consider an act on an additional public works technician to the existing complement of staff. Same date, Agenda 7, consider an act on a recommendation from the Budget and Finance Committee for employee com- Same date, agenda seven, consider an act on a recommendation from the Budget and Finance Committee for employee compensation. Three percent increase to all employees, with exception of City Administrator, Public Works, and the Chief of Police, with the exception, and ten percent increase with the, two technicians with, and then the step program to be reinstated. These are all items we're bringing back from the parking lot, and we're having additional expenses. Number eleven of five four twenty twenty one, consider an act on the drainage improvement project. I hear Public Works along Jones Road at Sunset Trail in an amount not to exceed forty thousand. Motion made by Carmona, seconded by Rosengarten. Budget amendment of ten thousand will be required. Approved unanimously. Six eight and six nine twenty twenty one, agenda item seven, consider an act on approval of amendments to the financial policies, FP one oh five, one oh seven. And why I mentioned those is because they were brought before council, but we didn't tackle D and E in one oh five. Six twenty two twenty twenty one, agenda item number nine, consider an act on approval of a special event coordinator agreement with Golden, with Golden and Company for Art Fest in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars. Our commission was able to take it from prior event, prior funds, without having to touch doing an amendment. Seven twenty 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 one, award Sunset Valley stimulus program grants to businesses not to exceed a hundred thousand. Approved unanimously. Agenda nine, consider an act on acceptance of the twenty nineteen twenty twenty financial audit by Haynes and Company. Approved unanimously. Budget amendment FY twenty 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 one, questions on engineering fees and journal entries. Three hundred fifty seven thousand amount, bring back item. That is dated seven twenty 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 one. Agenda item number ten, three hundred fifty seven thousand, engineering. July thirty one twenty twenty one, Saturday work session. Eight three twenty twenty one, agenda item twelve, presentation, discussion, and possible action on recommendations from Ampersand for the amount of a hundred fourteen thousand eight hundred thirty three, plus an additional thirty three thousand contingency. Agenda item thirteen, consider an act on approval of an ordinance amending the FY twenty 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 one budget. Councilmember Rosengarten made a motion to approve an ordinance amending twenty twenty to twenty twenty one budget for a total of one seventy one, six forty three, with additional backup and attachment A showing the hundred and twenty five thousand in budget savings. Seconded by Councilmember Reitz, discussion of expenses, including engineering task orders. That's date, I know you're looking at me because you've missed August 3rd twenty twenty one. Agenda item thirteen. Including engineering task orders, and what is the policy for approving expenses that were not budgeted or have gone over budget? Four to one vote, with Carmona voting no. Eight seventeen twenty twenty one, eleven, presentation, discussion, and possible approval of capital improvement projects. Eight seventeen twenty twenty one. All capital improvement projects that came before council had dollar amounts with them for each year, for the, for the coming five years. And we approved the year of twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. Nine seven twenty twenty one, new logo, moving on. Nine twenty one twenty twenty one, agenda item three, budget for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty, twenty, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, budget approved with much discussion at a hundred thousand as an assigned fund balance from surplus general fund. Approved unanimously. Agenda item twelve, same date, discussion on exploring an enterprise-wide solution system for the city with possible direction to staff. Explore, encourage for financial only, what the cost and process will be. Ten five twenty twenty one, agenda item nine, consider an act on approval of request for bids, request for proposals for the following projects and contracts. Public Works items, street maintenance, street sweeping, annual sewer line cleaning and inspection, and janitorial services, RFP. Councilmember Rosengarten made a motion to approve the RFPs and janitorial services, RFP, as amended and added a column with the account number reflecting the approved budget. Seconded by Councilmember Reitz, all voted in favor, and the motion carried. Agenda item ten, same date, consider an act on approval of the FY twenty twenty two CIP engineering task orders. Councilmember Carmona made a motion to approve the FY twenty two CIP engineering task orders, including a hundred and twenty eight thousand for Sunset Trail and Lone Oak improvements. Ten thousand for the Lovegrass Water Quality Pond Repair. Five thousand for the Valley Creek Trail, and accepting the proposed monthly reporting format with the requested changes to the reports and summary table. The motion was seconded by Mayor Protem Medikas. And we were to get a monthly report, which we are not getting. It was approved unanimously. Now, I can stop, because the rest of this is going into twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. But if you want me to continue, I will gladly do that. For, for instance, these are all the summaries of the council minutes.
Your personal notes?
Yes. Eleven nine twenty twenty one, consider an act on the following engineer task order related to the city facilities project closeout. We approved eighteen thousand two hundred and seventy five dollars to begin, begin the closeout process for the city.
Councilmember Rosengarten, and you're just listening that for?
The rest of this is going to go into the future. Where I'm trying to hit is the amendment that we're dealing with. So, I'm trying to look at that time period. Okay? So, that should help you on knowing where to look. And I should have already covered everything we approved.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Thanks. One thing to, we're, we're making good, good progress here, and I think that we're close. But I just have to say this again. So, when we saw that, when we got that list of task orders last night, thank you so much for compiling it. I appreciate you on Valentine's Day night, sending that to us. Thank you for doing that work. I wish we had it earlier, but I'm glad we have it now. The main task order that blew up, that went way over its budget, was the CIP item. Looks like task order number six, that was forty five thousand dollars instead of fifteen thousand dollars. I'll note again, that when the committee asked about this in the Budget and Finance meeting, this was the response from the city administrator. The CIP was a goal that's in my goals for evaluation. So, in my mind, it has to move forward. But no, there wasn't a budget impact table to the council. So, that's the line item that was dramatically overrun, directly serving toward, so that the city administrators' report, like, performance report could look good. And that just seems problematic to me. Okay. I can move forward with this amendment in general, if we can do a couple of things. One, just acknowledge, when we do so, that policies were violated. Two, since Councilmembers Rosengarten and Reitz have been so diligent about trying to get, you know, what resolution on this, and are able to work with staff on it more effectively than we, other people have been able to. If you could bring back a list of the process changes that actually happened as a result of these concerns. So, we've gotten kind of this like detailed list of process changes that are actually happening now. Awesome. I'm so happy. Thank you for doing that. Those process changes must also come with accountability. So that if a certain process is not followed, I want accountability steps. How do we check that? What do we do if it's not being followed? And so that it's actual, like, these are the process changes. I don't think that that's something we can ask you to do tonight. But that's kind of the only way that I would feel comfortable moving forward on this. Thank you.
Councilmember Reitz? Go ahead.
Yeah, we actually have those in process, you know, three of those already in process. And you should have seen a lot of, some of that with the budget amendment that is passed, and any council decision. So, you've already seen that in place now. Maybe you didn't notice, but, and you probably, you might not have noticed, because I didn't realize, really, until this year, that we also, not only did we have to approve the project, but we have to approve the budget amendment, if it changes the budget. So, there's, there were two decisions, and before, we only did the one. And we did the budget amendment at the end. But now, we changed that.
And it's an ordinance, so it's codified.
Yes.
Into, yeah.
Yes. And the other thing that is happening now, and I think they can verify that, is there now is a better PO system. That is, when they are ready to purchase something, they have to review their budget, get their PO, et cetera, et cetera. Correct? It's?
So, the, the accounting clerk uploads monthly, sometimes, I think this month, or, excuse me, January, it was bi-monthly reports, and it's on a shared drive. So, all of the, you know, department heads and supervisors have access to that budget report. So, we are, there's a line item on the PO now, there's a column. So, you, you are to notate which budget report you've looked at, confirming, okay, well, I looked at this budget report, and there was money left in this line item.
Yep. So, those processes are happening, along with the monthly report from Public Works on the CIP. The CIP is in place now, where we can track, track that with the tracking orders. And so, I believe we have a lot of the process, processes in place. At least, to me, that satisfies ninety percent of the issues. The other ten percent is going to happen. I, I don't care how good we are, we're going to have problems, and there's going to be an emergency, and we're going to spend over the penny. That's what's going to happen. And so, so, no matter what, you know, I, I, I think we can, we can beat this to death, and I think we have. I really think we have beat this to death. And yes, there were violations. And I would prefer to move forward in a positive way. I mean, I don't know what more anybody wants that's positive, and will be working better for the future, versus more berating of staff, or whatever, or more violations. And I would like to focus on the positive, that we were seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars under budget. Yes! And move forward with this amendment.
Just real quick before, recognize you, Councilmember Rosengarten. So, it is worth clarifying that not, everything is being brought back as a budget amendment immediately, right? And I would just point to the case in point, we passed an amendment, or not amendment, we passed a task order for two ninety wastewater, which we're not making a budget amendment for tonight, but there is going to be a budget amendment in the future.
That'll come, okay.
That'll come, right? Because that's, that's kind of where, it's hard to track these things at certain times, right? Because it doesn't require a budget amendment, because we're not exceeding our budget for that CIP project at this time. There is an implied need for it, because the cost estimate is now quite a bit more than what we budgeted for that item. So, there's a, I don't want that to get lost in sort of the, the discussion point, that everything is coming back as a budget amendment immediately. No, it's, it's in the staff backup that this is going to be more expensive, there will be a future budget amendment, but it's not happening immediately afterwards.
I, I think that's a good distinction. And I think that's, a way to track that would be also, how far we're, are, when we're getting close to that number, through those monthly reports, correct?
Well, I think the intention is that once we have a final scope that's bid, then we come back with a budget amendment, right? Because that, at that point, we actually have a certain amount, rather than making like, a gross estimate, and then having to, we could do that. I mean, that's, that's, council could say, we know this is going to be at, at least this much, but under four hundred thousand dollars. Let's go and make the budget amendment now. Then when it comes under, it becomes, you know.
I got you.
That's just being said, that it's worth pointing those kind of things out, because I think there is this sort of memory disconnect between when we take actions, that, you know, Councilmember Rosengarten had this long list of things, and when things follow up. There, we want, I think what council is asking for is, we want to make sure that that's, that's, we're, we're following up on those things. Right? And that there's, whatever process it is, we are having some documentation to say, we took this action, we, we acknowledge that, and we know that there's going to be, whether it's immediate, or, or short, or a little bit longer term. That being said, Councilmember Rosengarten, I'll recognize you now.
Sorry, I had to read that. I didn't want to pull out the big guns, but when I'm pushed, I'm going to pull out all my notes, and there's lots of them. Next one. For amendment number two for tonight, admin is thirty three thousand, water is fifty one eighty nine, wastewater seven hundred and thirty three, street is sixty eight forty, drainage is forty six seventy four, for a total of fifty thousand six seventy eight for tonight's amendment. I call the question.
All right, so there's a, a call to question, which means we vote on whether we're going to take immediate vote on the motion. So, all those in favor of calling the question, and we're not voting on the amendment, we're voting on calling the question?
Yes.
Please say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay?
Nay.
All right, so we are still in our discussion period. I heard two ayes and three nays. It sounds like, I, just to provide some feedback, you know, there is some consensus that maybe we can?
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Sophia.
I, I just want to clarify, for the second or third time to Councilmember Litchfield, the CIP was a council goal out of council retreats last year. It was a council goal out of council retreat, with a directive to me in my evaluation. A council goal out of council retreat.
Councilmember Litchfield, go ahead.
Yeah, so maybe in the, to reframe this, and maybe it's not going to be helpful for many other folks here. But I guess it's like the, the idea of, like the, like a postmortem in a kind of a software blow up or something, where someone's like, look, this is what we did. We looked like, this has been a huge issue, I think. I haven't been here this long, but this has dominated a lot of city council meetings. It's dominated way too much of my time. And so, let's, so I just want to say, so, so when I ask to see, like, the process is just written down, I'm asking for that in the spirit of a postmortem, where we say, like, look, this is what we screwed up. These are all the countermeasures that are now in place, and this is how we're going to move forward. That's all I'm asking for on that front.
Can that happen from staff? Yes, very good. Thank you.
So, that, that was a discussion at Budget and Finance at the last meeting. I did acknowledge the financial policies didn't match the process. I did acknowledge that. There's no shying away from we can improve. I just, I, I feel like this is more a, put Sylvia's spit, and you put Sylvia's head on a spit more than anything else. I don't know that anything else is going to change, other than improve the processes, which we've started to move in that regard already. The other part is an openness and a willingness to have those discussions. And up until this point, that has been very difficult. Open Gov was fought tooth and nail, tooth and nail. Its implementation could have been better. Yes, it could have. But we were fighting paper to begin with, and whether or not we were even going to go down an Open Gov path with a council directive, again, out of retreat, that said, you will implement Open Gov. And so, much as the committee didn't want to see that, that was the directive staff was given. So, yes, I am wholeheartedly welcoming process improvements. I welcome a task force, whatever this council wants to decide. But I'm, I'm really, really, really tired of the underlying tone that there's malfeasance, there's laws broken, because that was thrown around a number of times, a number of times. And it borders on slander. And quite honestly, I think staff has done an absolutely wonderful job to get us to the point where we are today. And if there's any staff turnover, it is because of issues like this, that staff continually gets beat up on.
So, I saw Councilmember Johnson, I think, if your hand was raised, it looked like it was, and then Councilmember Reitz.
Sure. I, I think a lot of the, or, actually, it's just for me. When we call out that the rules were not followed, I hold us just as accountable there. You know, it's like, we are, at the end of the day, you know, responsible for this kind of stuff. And when Alfonso, you know, shined a mirror, or pointed the mirror at us, and just said, like, we continue just kicking the can down the road. You know, which is like, we don't, we, we don't, well, let's just do this. We don't follow the rules, and we never call ourselves out on them. And now he is calling us out on it. And I respect that. And if it makes this process more painful, it's almost by design. Because like, we're finally acknowledging the fact that we, we have these committees. I, when committees come to us with stuff, I try not to change it in any way, or put, you know, we, we ask residents to be members of these committees. They do their best, they go through the process, they're in the meetings, and then they come to us, and it's like, for us just to say, nah, well, you don't really get it. It's like, the budget finance is like the A-team. If you look at the history of the members on that, it, it's just like a who's who of former mayors, former, former council, council members, people that work in finance. It's just like, it's stacked. And that committee especially, I don't want to ever, you know, take what, especially me up here. Like, I am the last person in the world that should kind of go against them. And so, when I see a list of people that like, have an issue with it, I kind of listen. That said? That said, with a lot of these changes in place, I wonder if we sat down and spent eight hours going through the whole process of just like the postmortem, would we, I'm going to do it again, sorry about that. Would we end up with this stuff? Would we end up with this and the things that we're already doing? What do you think? I think we might. So now I'm into this weird spot where it's just like, I want it to be painful because I don't want us to have to do this again.
Yeah.
I wanted this to be a painful memory for us.
That's it.
It is.
It is.
It is now.
Well, I, I mean, is it?
It is.
So practical, you're right.
So, I don't know, the, well, the question was called and then we didn't decide to do that, but this is where we're at. Sylvia, I, it is, it is us. I, I like to throw us on the kind of fire here because at the end of the day, it's, it's us. And so, and this is just Alfonso calling us to task for like, you know, taking responsibility for these, these issues. So that's it.
Councilwoman Reed's.
Oh, I, I kind of just wanted to add just a little more perspective on the, on that year of budget and finance. All of these meetings were virtual. And it's, and they were learning a new system. Open Gov. So on top of learning Open Gov, which really, to do it best, you need to be, need to see some big screens or you need to have two monitors there where you can follow everything to do it right. And instead, we're doing virtual meetings and everybody's trying to follow this little screen, you know, some of people on their laptops and stuff. And it was extremely difficult. And tempers were there. I, I, I listened in on some and frankly, it was like, man, you know, COVID is negative enough. I mean, tempers were out there anywhere with COVID. And so that, it just came out. And, and I, and I get what you're saying about this painful postmortem and I think we have kind of done that. I don't think we're going to come up, I have one more suggestion on here that I haven't brought up, but, and this was, I believe the chief, chief kind of mentioned that. And that is when we start the budgeting process, that we have a discussion about economic conditions and kind of do a foreseeing type of thing and have a good, strong discussion on that. And so that may play into some of our analysis as we put this budget together for next year. But I am very concerned about this window. And, you know, if we're going to talk about not passing this and not getting those auditors started, we are required by law to have a budget in place in September, by September 30th, which I would like to see a good product. I want it to be a well thought out product and I want Susanna to still be here and not say, you know, I can't do both at the same time well and get very frustrated. And that's going to be frustrating. And so I would like to get this audit started and then let's work on this budget process where we have a budget where people feel comfortable and confident, our department heads feel like I can operate within that. We have the right processes in place now that we have already started implementing and let's put those in place. Let's approach this front with positive analysis. I don't think we can beat up you guys anymore. I think we've done a good job of doing that and, you know, you guys have bared with it and I appreciate that. I don't think there's enough kudos given to you that, what y'all went through also. And it was a tough year and y'all were essential workers and some of us got to stay in our offices. Y'all had to be here a lot of the time and, and some of your staff all the time, you know. And I don't think a lot of people really appreciate that and really understand what that all entailed. And I do appreciate that. And so, you know, I urge us to go forth, pass this, let's have that moratorium, you know, and let's go through everything, you know, and let's get it out there, let's put it out there and see what needs to happen. But let's get things started. Let's not lose that idea, so.
Mayor, please.
Mr. Mayor, we vote at this moment for something and we, we agree that we cannot pass that. So I propose that we would sit down two or three hours, the city administrator, members of the city council, we will analyze, we need to have the representative of finance also. And if they can be also the directors, would be incredible because this is, they are the principal actors in this field. And if we would sit down here and we will discuss and that will be open forum between us and not, not to say, you are so good, no, you are incredible, no, how we can do much better. I need your feedback. We need to open. It's, it's not to flowers or other kind of things. We, we have a job. We have one responsibility and this is what we need to do. So it's no more to pass the ball, Mr. Mayor. My proposal is, if it's possible in this week, sit down two or three hours, three to five, three to six in the afternoon, one of these days, directors, the finance, the city administrator, if she's okay, and also the, the, the other lady that she mentioned that is in utilities. So in that way, they will be together because if at this moment they have the cross training between finance and utilities, these two ladies, it's important and they need to be there. So my suggestion is to move in that way.
We are subject to, yeah, we're subject to open meetings.
Yes, so any meeting that, that has more than two council members, we'd have to post three days in advance, so.
We, we can put, we made that last week, so I don't see.
Right, I'm just, I'm just saying in terms of like, we make sure that we, we have to post it, it has to have an agenda.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
But we can do that. It's, I think certainly there's, there, it seems like there's a possibility that we can do one of two things, you know, with regards to that.
And Mr. Mayor, if at this moment, again and again, they would start again and again, this is part of the discussion, but we can be here until 10 o'clock and I don't believe that I will change, so.
Yeah. And so just in regards to that, I mean, it seems like there's either, you know, a path to say, let's pass the amendment, but still have the, the postmortem or not pass it and still have the postmortem. I don't know if there's, you know, consensus in terms of like where council wants to go from the, either way, it sounds like there's an agreement to say, let's spend some time, you know, going through at least the questions and the policies and, and making sure that we're, we also ask staff to bring back, you know, what are the process changes and sort of document that. And then we asked Carolyn to go and go back and look at the last task order. So that information has already been requested of staff as well. Councilwoman Reed's.
Mayor?
Just, just.
Just point, so there's a motion on the floor, so we can't make another motion to extend the meeting. So there's a motion on the floor.
Okay.
Okay, okay. Can, I'll make one more point is, I don't want a hurried, let's get this meeting done and, you know, that type of thing. What I would like is a well thought out meeting with somebody giving some ideas, few agendas and all sorts of what are, what are the topics we want to cover, et cetera, et cetera. That's not going to happen for another, for weeks. I, I promise you, it won't happen for weeks. And so, again, that timeline is finite.
Councilwoman Litchfield, and then we're going to.
Also, we desperately need a whiteboard for that meeting, I feel. Like it is definitely, like I'm at the whiteboard kind of guy, but yeah.
Okay. So we are approaching the, the time when we need to either extend the meeting or, or not. So we are going to go, go ahead and vote on this just to, to see where, where council's at and then depending on what happens with the motion, we may make another motion to extend the meetings, you know, we could do that. So the motion is to pass the, I'll repeat it, but it's to, yeah, it's to approve the ordinance amending the fiscal year 2021 budget, budget amendment number two fiscal year 21 and appropriation of a budget surplus. So that's including the budget adjustment, the transfer subsidy adjustment and the budget sweep.
And was there an amendment, was, did you add on anything, Wanda, about the?
No.
Oh, no, it's already in place.
Okay.
But I'm sorry, we vote for that, we vote no.
We have not voted for that. We called the question and we voted on not calling the question. We were not voting on the amendment or the, the motion to approve the amendment itself. So this is the vote on the, to approve the amendment itself. So when we, when we voted earlier, it was voting on whether to call the question, which is a procedural motion to say, if that, if that is approved, then we immediately go to voting on the motion that's on the, on the table or that's up for consideration.
So at this moment, we will, we will vote to approve this.
Vote to, the motion is to approve the budget amendment and, and this transfer subsidy in the budget sweep.
So can we add that we will have approved amendment and that we will have a postmortem in the next month where we fully analyze the issues?
I think there were two things that I heard that might be helpful, if, just as a suggestion. One is to state that it's acknowledgement that council, there was an acknowledgement that financial policies were violated and to have a postmortem. That's what I heard from discussion, but that's, that's, that would be up to the amendment maker or the motion maker and the, the second.
Councilmember Rosen Garden, do you, would you agree to those changes?
What were they again?
That one, there's in the motion that we acknowledge, that there is an acknowledgement that financial policies were violated and two, the council will have a moratorium with staff members, a well thought out, a moratorium with staff members and council members to analyze the shortcomings.
The motion is amended with those two, two facts. Okay, so we are voting on to approve the, the, the budget amendments with the addition of an acknowledgement that financial policies were violated as well as the intention to hold a moratorium within the next month to review our financial policies and, yeah. All right. Is that clear to council we're voting on?
Yeah, but this is the best that we can do.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
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 So the motion passes with a, I heard three council members say aye and two say nay. So council, at this point, if we are going to continue our agenda, we still have a couple more items, or one more item in the procedural executive session, we need a motion to extend past nine o'clock.
I will make a motion to extend past nine o'clock.
All right, there's a motion, is there a second? Councilmember Johnson? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, so we're extending the meeting up for up to an hour.
Can we, can we, can we have a short break?
My, my apologies. Sometimes I just get rolling.
I know.
Let's take a, a five minute break. Council, I'll, when we get back, I think there's a couple of things that we can obviously proceed with. We have the agenda number 14, which generate a lot of discussion in Open Gov. It also relates to, I think, some of the, the potential moratorium. We also have a potential to go into executive session. However, the executive session will be limited to consultation with the city's legal attorney and we're not going to be discussing personnel matters during the executive session. So just as for, if, we don't have to go into executive session, in fact, it might be better to, you know, to, to reconvene an executive session at some, at part of the moratorium or something like that, so. With that, we'll go into a break for adjourned for five minutes. All right, we are reconvening at 9:08 PM and we're picking up with agenda item number 14. I know that the two sponsors, I'll let them speak first, but this is regarding our financial policies. So Councilwoman Rosen Garden?
I sent an email to both the chief and Carolyn today and I asked them to speak regarding financial policies and how it affects them because when a financial policy is not followed, it's simply because it's a hardship and the department heads have to follow policy. Why or what has happened? Care, chief, you first.
I'll go over, when we're putting the budget together, basically I'd look at three years and kind of try to forecast historically what's happened. Inevitably, something comes up that during the year that I didn't plan for. I'll give you an example today. For the past week, our gate, after that freeze, for some reason, our gate froze up here at the police department. I look, I'm looking at my budget, I don't see anywhere to take that out of and I don't know how much that's going to cost. They haven't given me an estimate, but for over a week now, the gate's been open. So. So I know that I need to get that fixed soon. I mean, it causes concern among staff, they're leaving their vehicles in there, sometimes the garage is let up. Now, I think, okay, that's a facility item. We have a policy in place now that if I put in a PO for, to fix that, I'll get, Lori, the accountant, will contact me and say, hey, you put in this PO for this, you don't, I'm looking at the budget report, you don't have that, the money in there. So it's, that PO's not going to go through. Now, that problem is still, I need to get that gate fixed somehow. So now I'm going to start going down the line on in my budget to determine where can I take this out of. Really, that's, I'm going to be violating policy to do that, but it makes sense for me to do that rather than, or I could wait another two, till our next council meeting and get that, I'm sure that's going to cost a few hundred dollars, and put that on the agenda. In the meantime, the gate's not going to be fixed. So I know where I came from, we had, first of all, we had a miscellaneous fund for small things like that, or we called it a reserve fund. When I came here, that's what I, I had a fund that said reserve, that that's what I used it for. That fund's since gone away. I think the interpretation of reserve was turned into like the reserve officer. Somehow that fund is gone now and so that's, part of the reasons I go over on some items is that it's not knowing where things should come out of, but I know I have the money there. We fixed that now, but it would help to have that flexibility for me to be able to, for this, for instance, for this gate, instead of taking it out of facilities, to take it out of small tools for one time. Informally, I'll just be honest, since I've been here, I've been doing that. Anyway, some things, I know whenever I used to go before the finance committee, I would get questions as to why is this in there? So they were picking up that, you know, sometimes sub sandwiches were in, you know, a certain category, but it, that's what I was doing then and that's what I've always done, even in my previous job, that's what I, that was just the norm to do that. It's going to be, I mean, we can follow these rules, but again, we're going to be waiting to get things done that really, it's going to make us more, it's going to be inefficient to do that. And so I suggested in my email that we, we get together, actually look at the fork, what is going to be the economic climate? We can predict a lot of thing that, like we know now inflation's going to be up. So somewhere during the budget process, we need someone with, and we've got people here in the city with that kind of expertise to be able to say, hey, you can expect, these things are going to happen next year, make sure that your budget reflects that. So we have a realistic, I mean, we've been, again, since I've been here, it's been cut, 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 cut these budgets, figure out a way to cut them. And at some point, we're going to get to the point where there is no more cutting and it's going to cause these overruns to happen.
Carolyn?
But before you move on, I think Councilmember Relishfield, you had a question for Chief Carter?
I'm a bit confused because when I see the policy, it says that an item up to $500 can be approved by the city administrator only, or up to $2,500 can be by the city administrator and the mayor. And I feel like that's like a quick couple phone calls, that would be pretty easy to happen. So, but in your description, you characterize that as would need to wait for a city council meeting, so that's confusing.
If it costs, if it costs, I just threw that number out there, they may come back.
So if it's more than $2,500, it would need, but otherwise, if it's below, it's just like, text somebody and it's fine.
Yeah.
Either way, it's an amendment.
Did you have a question for Chief Carter?
I did, and did you say in order, in order to find the money, you might see other items that you could kind of like pull from?
What I do is take, I'll determine, okay, I'm going to be able to have one last meeting if I take $200 out of this fund this year, but it's, it's worth it to do that. I mean, that's basically what I've done is make decisions along that, hey, do I hold off on this for next year?
Okay, I got it.
He might cut ammo, you know?
That's a joke, that's a joke.
I guess maybe my follow up question for this, this particular item, like when you use the example of the gate, why could that be considered an emergency purchase and why wouldn't it go through that process? Because it's essentially safety at that point or, you know, so we do have other parts of our financial policies, say, you can go out and use your credit card to go and pay for something, right? Or, and then you go in the next business day to talk to.
That's, that's what's been happening is that, I'll say this is an emergency in my mind, I don't even really worry. I know, or at least I feel that no one's going to be upset with me fixing that gate. It's an emergency, so I'll go in and pay for it, but I've already spent that money. And so then I send the PO over to accounting and they say, oh, you know, where are you going to get that? Now, it should be, this is an emergency item, but I think that we don't explain that as much as we should, so it gets in these cost overruns and then we don't remember why we, later we don't remember that, hey, this was an emergency at the time.
Mayor Protem and then Councilmember Johnson?
I, I think then, I think that we are mixing the point. All the heads of departments, they participate in the budget. It's part of the budget. Each head of department submit one budget. Now, what happened, obviously, we assumed that we have new facilities. So the new facilities, you don't expect that you will have some failures, for the example that you mentioned, but still, so you have for repair and maintenance equipment, $3,000. So if you have some idea that they are using continuously that door, perhaps you need to put $12,000. So, but that is the criteria of the head of department. So at this moment, it's not the policies. In the budget, when we are doing the budget, the heads, they need to have some education in, in the things that they are doing and you have a lot of experience, chief. And, and you guys, they have a lot of experience. So in that case, they need to do very meticulous, watching the budget line by line. Now, you propose, if that will go to some committees and later to the city council, well, they will have that decision. And if you will tell them that it's possible, that you will have that problems. Maybe the city council has a, a fund for contingency and emergencies, maybe $60,000 or $100,000. So when you have that kind of problems and you finish your items, the city council immediately with the city administrator, go ahead and do it. So I think that at this moment, it's important that the heads of departments, they need to put that attention and they need to take more, more responsibility and accountability for what are they doing. So I think that we pass a bad times, but we are now new times. And again, no, because we are doing bad predictions and guessing, we say, change this. You don't need this, why? Let us, freedom, why we don't need to have this? If we can use whatever we want to use, no. You need to do a budget that will reflect what are you doing. So in that case, in my opinion, your example, you, you have other kind of things, vehicles, how, how often you need to replace that vehicles and you need to put that, you allocate a lot of money in overtime. Why? Because the people is using the overtime, we need that. So in the same way, you will request your budget according with your necessities. And if it's emergency, let the city council to know. So in that way, we will have some contingency, a big, big chunk of money that perhaps if we need to use, we would use for that. This is how I can see that for all departments.
Councilmember Johnson then?
Mayor, oh, sorry.
I feel like sometimes like when, when the police say, we need money for something, we, we always do kind of treat it as like an emergency because it's, I mean, that's kind of like your, yeah, it's like a safety, so, but like, I don't know, this, I'm very interested when Carolyn gets to, gets to go on this because it's like, it's probably going to be another emergency where it's just like this, we need this money and it's a, and I don't think anyone's going to give, if what comes out of this is like for emergency use, then it's probably palatable. And this is a, an even like higher look at this question, which is like, I, I really want to know council's perspective on, and anyone else. Do we have a lot of money in the bank because Austin is like, is booming and we are 30% a commercial district and no matter what we would have done, whether Michael Francis was granular about his budgets or not, we would have just, you know, we're just kind of moving pieces around and the money is just like washing over us? Or is it because we've always kind of like kept a very strong eye on like the way that we spend money? Not to be difficult about it, but just because we're kind of like a small fish in a, in a big pond and like we have a lot of expenses and so we're like very kind of, we want to make sure that we have the money for the rainy day. If, I don't know, I want to hear that from other people on council, just, just, let me, let's just bracket this, this total question when we come to it.
Sylvia and then Councilmember Relishfield?
Yes, I, I wanted to point, sorry, I wanted to point out to the fact that even if it's an emergency and the city administrator and the mayor have certain powers in an emergency that could sign that PO, that doesn't negate the cost overrun. Much like we're talking about, council gave a directive for CIP and now we have forgotten about it, same thing with an emergency, when we get to do the budget amendment, people forget that it was an approved emergency or then we begin to have the questions, was it even an emergency? Who's emergency? Who defined emergency? Who called it out? So just the fact that there is a purchasing power does not negate the fact that it is a budget overrun.
So first of all, we have provisions for all of this. There's three things. One, I'm really frustrated at the way that this is being presented because now it looks like I'm arguing with chief about this and I'm absolutely not. And I don't want to hear from Carolyn because I feel like I might say something negative there, but like, no, like any acrimony about this amend, this agenda item is all over here. So I don't want you to feel like this is like, I don't want it to go over there. I'm frustrated that we're even framing it this way, this is silly. We have policies and procedures for this, we have a budget and finance committee, they own this process, this is something that we can talk to them about this, maybe they should lower the resolution of the budget process, you know, maybe they should like lump salaries together. I don't know, it's not my call, it's their job, this is their world. Why are we talking about it here for the very first time? They're outraged that we're even talking about this and we've completely gone around them. Like, it's like the city's trying to take all the way, all the control over everything from the committees and they're like, so many committees are howling and this is just silly. Like, why are we talking about this? I would like to move to vote on this question right now. Make a motion to vote on this agenda item.
Well, you can make a motion to.
Right, yes, and then we discuss and all this.
Right, but, so what's your motion?
To vote on this agenda item.
Do you want to vote to not approve this?
I vote to reject this with prejudice, but I, I vote to not approve this budget.
So there's a, the motion, yeah, the motion is that you.
Sorry, I'm a little bit frustrated.
You want to move to not approve the amendments to the financial policies. So there's a motion, is there a second for that before? So the motion is to not approve the amendments to the financial policy, it's been seconded. That does open up for discussion. Councilmember Rosen Garden and then Councilmember Reed.
I had the floor earlier and I was asking for Carolyn next to speak.
Sorry, please go ahead, it's, it's, it gets a little confusing when there are some questions directed at chief and then it, you know, so my apologies. Carolyn, go ahead.
Okay, so, you know, when we make the budget, we always do this with the best intention and the best information we have in mind. You know, we, like chief said, we review the historical budgets, we try to forecast for the future. However, there's always going to be the unexpected, those things that we can't predict. So last year, we had the winter storm, that brought a lot of things into play, created different things with overtime and, and, you know, repairs that weren't expected, we know when we talk about things like that. So I can completely understand what we're saying here about, you know, what qualifies as an emergency and those type of things. I think, you know, our goal is always basically to, you know, provide quality services for the residents and sometimes I think, you know, that's the main goal, is that we're providing services to the residents and, and all the visitors and everybody who comes to the city of Sunset Valley through the commercial areas. You know, that's, that's our goal, is to make sure we have public safety and safe trails and safe streets and everything like that. So sometimes I feel like, sometimes we lose the forest for the weeds, not for the trees, but the weeds, because we get down in those weeds really deeply and we're forgetting that that's our goals, that we're doing this. And I, you know, I think there are definitely changes that can be made in looking at some of these financial policies about, you know, what are those limits and stuff? Because I don't know how long some of these goes, some of these were adopted and written, but maybe it's time to look at those limits because as chief was mentioning, inflation, procurement, things are different now than they were two years ago. So maybe things that we look at that. Speaking to Mayor Protem Harmono's point is that in the 2022 budget, we did anticipate wanting to make sure we plan for emergencies. And the water and the, some of the utility budgets, we actually have emergency response line items now, that were not previously there, so that we do have a place that we can go in the need for emergencies that we, so that we can do that. So those things, those things were put into the 2022 budget to address that. So we have, you know, God forbid that lift station does what you were saying, man, because we are going to fix that, there's not going to be a question, we're going to make sure that's, you know, addressed. And so we do have a place, we can get funds to do that now. Is it enough if that happened? Probably not. We probably would have to still go over budget and we're still going to make an emergency response. I think this is a great opportunity for discussion and looking at these. I think, you know, the ability to make those intra depart, intra departmental transfers within the department, looking at those amounts and what we can, you know, what we can, you know, do as department heads and what can we do as mayor approval and looking at those amounts is a good place to start. And that may be going to the budget and finance committee and kind of having that discussion and looking at the policies.
Councilmember Reed?
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, Councilmember Rosen Garden, did you?
I'll wait. Wow, I've been slipped over three times, sorry. Okay, one, I just want to say, I think that was extremely disrespectful of the council's sponsors of the agenda, that you would vote to shut it down without any discussion, without, I didn't even get a chance to say a word and you tried to vote it down. And I think that's disrespectful. And when you bring something up, I hope I have the respect to listen because you might learn something or I might learn something and I would hope that that would happen. If we look at FP 105, so first off, this is not an attempt to circumvent the budget and finance committee. The, I asked Ms. Cloud if they reviewed financial policies this year and she said yes. I listened to some of their responses to this budget amendment, I listened to a number of budget and finance meetings. What I heard were things like, did you write up the employees who did this? Did you do this? I heard, I heard no analysis. And so I'm trying to get people to look at what's the root cause of the problem and I want people to be open minded. Based upon the open gov that I saw, there's not a lot of, there's a lot of control, control versus let's be open minded and see what works, what's a, what's a good solution to all this? So that's really what this is about. So if I look, if you can pull up FP 105.
With the, this one?
FP one, the, but number six. So, oh gosh.
Or do you want me to pull up the original?
Can you do just a clean copy?
Sure, sure, sure.
A clean copy?
One moment.
Okay, so let's look at D. Now, the example chief has given and you're saying, okay, well, he can just make a few phone calls. What does it say? It says before the funds are expended by the department head, city administrator and reported to city council. That's a lot of steps to go for one cent over budget. That, I am kind of amazed that that's not glaringly obvious to people. I think if I go knock on my neighbor's door and say, does it really matter to you if in the police budget, the police, our, our chief spends a little more on one line item and a little less on one line item but comes in under budget? Are you okay with that? Because he, he thought he was making the best decisions possible for this city. Are you okay with that? And I think every neighbor I knocked on that door would say, absolutely. And who, and who is, who is the council to say they know better? You know, who are we to say, I know better than the chief where he should spend his money? You know, I know better than Carolyn where she should spend her money. I know better than Matt. I, who's to say that? They are experts in their field. They should be allowed to do their job within parameters. I'm not saying we should just give a, you know, do whatever you want. That's not in the least bit of what I'm saying. But I don't want to make our processes so restrictive that we go through this process with this budget amendment. Every year we've got to dig this all up. And you know, on that budget amendment, I don't know if you noticed, but there was an approval for 47 cents. Really? It's like, really? That's what we do? And, and we're spending all of this time doing that for this 47 cents when we could be doing so much better things, so many better things for the city. I do not feel like we have lax financial controls. Now, I, I have no problem with budget and finance reviewing it. I do have a problem if they go in there with the attitude that I saw on the open gov. They were not open to it. They did not, they were just wham bam, it was just awful. There was a lot of arguments about city administrator versus city manager. As far as I can see, I researched as much as I could in the short amount of time and they both have budgets and they both have to manage budgets and you can clarify that if that's any different, but they both have to manage budgets and so they both have controls in place. And so I don't know why we can't have discussions about this. And the last point I want to make is, policy is made by council. Our budget and finance volunteers, our CED volunteers, they are fabulous people. You know, our police safety committee, they're fabulous volunteers. They come once a month, they spend a couple of hours, you know, budget and finance spends more hours, you know, and they give their opinions and stuff. But they are not accountable. You know, when I sat there on budget and finance and I said, okay, that looks good. Yeah, let's take $500, pat me on the back. I went home, didn't worry a thing about it. I'm not, I wasn't accountable, but these folks are. And we need to give them the tools to do their job. And that's all this is trying to do. We should listen to them. We should hear what they say. Budget and finance should listen to them. I hope that y'all would go to budget and finance and tell them your pro, you know, tell them what happens, you know? And then also do a little fight, I mean, look, it has to be approved by city, why does city council have to approve you spending a penny over your budget? I don't get it. So that's where I'm at.
Councilmember Rosengard and then Councilmember Johnson and then Mayor Proton.
You can see in your backup that we contacted other cities to see what they do. Then the question was brought to me that they're not general law cities, type A mayoral run cities. So I said, okay, fine, I'll go further. So I contacted DML and I asked them for a list of all the cities that are general law type A with mayoral run cities. I've contacted three so far. City of Thurl says, no, we don't have any financial policies. City of Rollingwood says, we just meet, I just meet with the mayor, I just meet with the mayor once a week and I let him know what's going, what is over budget. And we don't do an amendment right away, we do it later on, but the mayor's updated. City of Banderas, I'm still waiting to hear back from them, but I will continue with more cities to give you information. But we are too strict on our policies on D and E and I think we need to revise that.
Senator Johnson?
Sure. When, when were these amounts, when were these set?
This was initially approved in 2013, but then there were some amendments that happened, which I believe, I don't think that these changed since 2013. There were some amendments, you know, later.
My house, I think my cost, my house cost like $250,000 back then. So I'd be, I'd be open to upend these amounts, but, um, you know, on another side of, so that was like one thought. The other thought is, I, I have sat up here when we questioned, you know, staff comes to us with how much money they need for something and it's like, can you do it 20 cots? Can you, how about half the number of gas cans and how about, how about this? How about that? And I don't know, like, but there's one side of it where it's like, I don't know, we, we ask them to, you know, cut back on, you know, they say like, this is how much we want to spend. It's like, no, you don't need that much. And then come back and say, oh, well, we should let you move money around because you don't have enough money to do what you want to do. Well, I mean. But, 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 I mean.
It becomes a game.
It's not, well, it's not.
It becomes a game.
I'm not cutting.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, it's just like, you know, if they say they need, they're the pros. If they say how much money they need and I used to, I go back to the software thing because that's what I've been doing for 20, 30 years. It's like, someone, a client says, how long does it take to do this? And I say, let me get back to you. And I come back a couple of days later, I'm like, it'll be 28 hours, 28 and a half hours. They're like, that's too much, about 20 hours. And I'm like, maybe 25 hours? And there's like, no, no, 20 hours. And I'm like, fine, it's 20 hours. And then when they get the bill and it's 24 hours, they're like, I thought it was 20 hours. I'm like, no, 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 you said it was 20 hours. I'm the programmer. These are the programmers here. They know how much things cost and they come to us and then we're just like, mm, you don't need that much. And then we need to change our financial policies because this is what this is saying. We need to like, you know, restrict them from, or open it up so they can move money around because we weren't giving them as much money as they originally wanted. Does that make sense? Like, I'm willing to like up it because like these are very low, but I don't know.
We're not moving money around. It's allowing them to, if they're low in one budget line but higher in another, as long as they stay within their budget within their department fund, they're okay. Because we approved that budget. Say we, say we gave, um, say we gave a million two to the police department and they didn't go over a million two, but we allowed them to move around within the line. And he realizes, as chief said, I'm gonna forego another meeting and that amount will now pay for the gate to be repaired. So all we're asking for is to allow them to work within their budget.
Yes.
But am I misstating or am I misremembering when we would restrict or when they would say how much, maybe I'm just remembering like one offs that would come to council when it's just like, hey, we need this much money for this. It's like, well, uh, what if we only did 75% of that?
We need them. So what we did is we, we took away his second, his second meeting already for him so he didn't have that second meeting to say, I'll forego this second meeting so I can pay for the gate to be fixed.
But I, I want to acknowledge that like the, the.
Yes.
I, I don't know, like, I want to just say, I'm going to just say, it's like, it's, I'm willing to treat the staff as pros and no, and I'm not the one who is taking money away from them when they tell us how much they need. And it, it might be someone that is like in favor of moving money around who's saying, cut, cut, cut.
So Mayor Proton?
You, anybody resemble that?
Okay. Okay, um. First, eh, I'm sorry, Wanda, um, council member Reed. I tried to say respect and I didn't respect. Sorry. But when I was looking this, that remind me, um, sometimes when I used to be in your place, because I used to be employee from cities for almost 30 years. And for 22 years, I was working with budgets because I was manager. Can you hear?
I think your head pieces, yeah.
Yeah, I tried to turn off. I'm, I'm sorry. So the first was with respect with you. I, I don't. I was, I was never thinking that I was sitting in a council against the employees because I was employee. And sometimes as employee, I didn't try to move too much the water. I was happy. I was in good position. I was a manager and I was with three budgets minimum or three departments and was good. But I was very critical how I was working with that. And I was very picky with the money. And when I used to make the budget, because I was working all, all the year with the budgets, I used to present that to my boss and later with the city manager and later we used to go to council to fight for the budget. And I tried to defend point by point with justifications. Sometimes here we are not doing the same exercise. If that place was bigger, was a large or a larger city than this, but the policies, they were the same, the same these policies. And we used to, to find the way to do the job and with a lot of frustrations because always we were looking for budget for money. This city is very, very lucky. We don't have any debts. In both cities than I was, almost 33% of our revenues, they went for debt, to pay debt. Here, no, we have reserves, we have a lot of things, but that doesn't means that we don't need to be careful. We need to be watching that now. They are very, very good slogans. We are the experts. So sometimes we call the experts. The city council is then is doing the policies. Nobody can argue about that. But it doesn't work in that way. We have to work together and it's no bad idea what happened now. I, I told you before, I am so happy to be in one city council that we can discuss. No city council then, yeah, yeah, what did you say? Yeah, whoa, whoa. And everything good and smooth. Sometimes the life is too smooth. And at this moment, we have a lot of that things. This, this, uh, this, uh, did, this budget planning and management was effective April 16, 2019. From 2019 to now, it's three years and with a big, big change. So last week, we signed for the, eh, city cards, for the cards. We increased for, for the employees, how much money they can use in city cards. Why? Because we understand that. Looking $500 and maximum $2500, I think that we need to increase this. We can increase these amounts, but we cannot change these policies. So we need to move on, not to destroy, to work with this. Because this is how other people was working with this city before us and we are sitting here. So looking this way, it's true. As the chief, he mentioned, maybe to fix that is $12,000. And if they don't have a contingency and the city doesn't have the contingency, how we can support that? Well, perhaps he can be working within department. Yes, why no? But it's not too much money than they have. And the city administrator needs to know. And in that amount, large amount, the mayor, he needs to know. Because this is critical. And if we start little by little digging and digging in long range, will be a lot. So again, when they were looking these cards, layway, uh, um, they were looking layway, they were looking city of Maynor, eh, they were looking, this, the cities also, they were looking, oh, the, the school, Austin Independent School. So these kind of things is important that as a reference. Not necessarily they follow this. And in my opinion, sometimes this is, um, this is a, a little more than compromise this because not necessarily everything is clear when we are watching this. I don't try to play in the, in the obscurity or in the dark. I remember when my wife, you, you mentioned Ariel Cloud, right? I, I couldn't hear why, why you mentioned her.
And then she said they did.
Okay. So. She was checking some of these things. And if I remember, when I hear what yesterday, the lady from that place, wow, she said, I didn't say that. This is a misrepresentation.
Oh, she didn't tell me that.
My daughter, she was crying, crying. And I say, why are you crying? Look what they are doing. They are destroying that woman. It's her job. It's misrepresentation, father. And I say, and he said, I'm sorry, I hope then, because I wasn't talking, only hearing the telephone. So these kind of things, we need to be careful. We need to be careful because, not because we try to obtain something, we will do other things bad. We need to be careful. In a few words, I, I believe in evolution, no in destruction. If that was 2019 and now it's 2022, that three years, I agree to increase just a little, but always with the eyes of the mayor. If no, I reject that. Thank you.
So council, just as a time check, it's 9:48. We have 12 minutes left in our session unless we continue it to tomorrow. Um, I do want to make sure the public also has a chance to, to get their feedback. Councilmember Lishfield and then I'll open it up for at least the members of the public who are here to speak and I'll, we'll talk about it.
Sure. I'll be quick. The, I mean, the thing, just to clarify, the, the reason that this is frustrating to me is not because, I, I agree, like maybe we can inflation adjust these numbers, makes sense. This operation, this amendment is not happening in a vacuum. The reason that these people are upset is because this is not happening in a vacuum. This is not like some, oh, maybe we were randomly brainstorming and like we thought this was, would be a great idea, a great way to improve the city. I'm generally open to that. Like, I love hearing ideas about how to, you know, improve the city. This times out directly with, you know, months and months of people being upset about these exact policies being violated. And so this is not like, this is happening at the same time that we're, that this, these residents are calling for accountability for these policies being violated. residents are calling for accountability for these policies being violated. And so I don't think we should treat this like this is a vacuum. Like, if we want to look at this in six months, if we want to kick it down to the finance committee, like, let's do it. But this is just like a continuation of the previous thing, which again, these policies have been violated and this isn't cool. And the answer is not to just take the rulebook away. And, and we already have all the affordances in place to make meaningful changes or to, to get most stuff done, which everybody's agreed to. And we can talk about raising limits or whatever, but we have systems in place that work fine.
Counselor Rosinger, did you want to speak at all? I'm sorry.
Reitz. It's getting late. And it is getting late.
Counselor Reitz.
So, so you're right, it's not happening in a vacuum. And that's what it was, it was disappointing that this is something that I wish would be analyzed in, in relation to all of this. And I wish the Budget and Finance Committee would look at things in that broader sense. And, and I know when you look at financial policies, I know, and I've been there, and it, it's mind numbing, you know, your eyes glaze over financial policies, you know. But this one is, is, it is really handcuffs. I mean, clearly that part before funds are expended and it has to go to council, it's like, wow, they're so restricting. And so we need, I would hope that the Budget and Finance Committee could approach this with the right spirit and really look at, you know, let's look at this. Go knock on your neighbor's door and ask them, ask their opinion. They're, they're kind of, the Budget and Finance Committee are kind of vested in this and there, there's some angry feelings. And so I'm a little concerned that there's not the open mindedness. But if that's the case, go knock on everybody's door, ask their neighbor, what do you think? What do you, ask our residents, what do y'all think? And so that's really how I want to get this, this started, so.
Counselor Litchfield.
Just, so it says reported to council. And I think maybe we might be talking past each other a little bit.
Maybe.
Where to me, I see, right, before they're expended by the department head and the city administrator and reported to council. Maybe we need to change a punctuation mark there.
Maybe.
That said, but that's, and that's totally reasonable. That says like, by the way, after the fact, this will be reported to council. I don't think anybody's disputing that and I would welcome clarification on that front, for sure.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, but words matter, things matter, and all this matters because it is their jobs, you know? And so, so we've got to, we've got to do our job as council, so, okay.
Counselor Tustin, and then.
Sorry. This is not what you meant because it is getting late, but you gotta be open, more mind, you gotta be more open minded and say it my way. I mean, it's like, I don't know. When, when it's time to see the, the committees, I am going nuts and going through my address book and just figuring out every single person like, hey, come on, get on the committee, get on the committee. At the point where you're going like, knocking on the door, yeah, I get it, but it's just like, like, serve on the committees, like, that, that is like, the people that are like, most vested. I don't know, you go up to, there are literally, I don't know, tens of neighbors, they're like, I don't know, whatever you say, Rob. I'm like, no, no, I want to hear, like, I have an opinion on this. Because if you say whatever you say, Rob, I kind of like dismiss it, I want some pushback. So, I don't know, Budget and Finance were the people that were interested in this and I, I don't know. And just, so it's like, hey, here you go, make decisions and then we like, eh, never mind, we, we didn't like what you came up with. Again, I, I'm gonna be a broken record on that.
Melissa?
Melissa Gonzalez, twenty-six, Reitz. I think good policy discussions are wonderful. I think remembering that the budget officer for the city is sitting in that chair and that's the way our government is set up and that's important. So if he needs more flexibility, I think that he should have it. But that's the budget guy in our city who, who, who is responsible for our budget. Everybody else is under him, that's his staff. And so I think that there's some good parts of some questions that Councilmember Reitz is asking, but they're not reflected in that, which is why people are upset. That has so much misinformation added and it overruns the authority of that guy. And that's offensive to a lot of people, especially those of us who worked on the defeating the city manager proposal, which we defeated here in Sunset Valley. So the, the ideas of changing the numbers and those professionals are the ones who create their budgets. They create it with a slush fund of essentially four hundred thousand dollars. That's a big thing. That's what we call the sweep, but really it's kind of a little bit of padding. And we always left it there and the previous city manager always wanted it there. And then we'd move it over at the end of the year. Now, they know their budgets enough that they can rearrange that. It got destroyed during that bronze budget process. So we need to go back to those line items that existed before the bronze budget because that whole fake information of eighty percent cuts and all that is what destroyed a lot of our process. So we need to, since we know we're okay now, go back to what that looked like. That would fix a lot. And yes, there's certainly some laughter about people deciding to have multiple flexibility who were previously cutting everything, but neither here nor there, that's just internal things that we're gonna smile about because everybody knows everybody and should love everybody for who they are, because we're all trying to work together for this. But what is before us is a massive city manager grab behind the thing. It may not be the intention. And I hear from what Councilmember Reitz is saying, that's not the intention. But those are what those words are like. And that's what the backup is like and a whole lot of that is misleading. So I, I'm thrilled to hear that's not the intention. I'm thrilled to hear we want to have good policy discussions, but, but those are two different things, you know, so, and, and that's why people are upset. So go back to before the bronze, you know, those people should make budgets that make real sense to them and if we need to have new line items, they should come back up. And, and that's a good solution. I'm trying to offer good solutions and I'm telling you that I think those are good solutions. And I, and I don't, I don't begrudge the thought of flexibility, but the authority is in that guy, not in the city administrator. And, and that gives us a city manager form of government, which is what all those comments are about and that's why you got the pushback that you did. Thank you very much for your time.
So counsel, what I would like to see is, I, I want the staff to have more flexibility in this and I am in agreement that we need to revisit this section to say, are these limits current and appropriate? The language, I'm in agreement that it doesn't make sense, right, for us to have like a, you know, a hard stop that implies it has to become for council when we have examples that are very real world examples saying, I have a, I have a problem, it's not, it's not an emergency, there's no like emergency declaration, you know, but I need to go and fix a gate, right? And we have to, some mechanism. I would also really recommend that in this next budget cycle, department heads and city administrator myself and counsel consider having a contingency item for departments that is of a certain amount, whatever, whatever it is, you know, if it's five hundred dollars or, or something that, whatever, or it scales, right? And I think that's, that's something else to evaluate too, which it sounds like we used to have, but we may have cut some of those reserves from our current budgets. But I think it completely makes sense that we have some flexibility to say, when I, and I'm a project manager, I always build in contingency, you know, to my projects, like, you know and you report to say, we're gonna have to go dip into our contingency and whoever's responsible for that is, is like, yeah, thanks for, for telling me, I agree with your reasons or, you know, we need to go back and relook at this. But it's, it's built into your budgets, built into the engineer, engineers' budgets in their, you know, that they give to us for CIPs. So I think there's to be some flexibility there. But that's, that's my take on it, is the, the budget manager, right? And I want to make sure that the departments have what they need, but, and so I think it's worth relooking at. Counselor Rosinger?
Yes. Councilmember Litchfield, would you consider revising your motion and instead of saying not to vote for tonight's agenda, but to say, just send it to the finance, Budget and Finance Committee? In other words, what if they found that it was perfectly fine, they just wanted to see it? So don't say that you, you wouldn't vote for it, but simply say that you're gonna send this to Budget and Finance.
Yes, that's fine with me.
Thank you.
Is that fine with the second?
I have an altered opinion, so.
Yeah, so you, both the, the motion maker and the second have to agree to any changes. So if, it's, right now there's a proposal to change the motion from not approving it to referring it to Budget and Finance.
Again, I, I think that we are doing, like, the policies by the city council, this is the policy. So it's our job, no, not the committee. So we don't need to pass the ball to the committee. We need to take care about that ourselves. So this is how I am thinking.
So it sounds like the motion is not gonna be amended. So we have a motion, it is ten o'clock. Counsel, you know, in. Can I second? We can make another motion.
You could have a substitute motion if somebody else wanted to do that.
I withdraw the change to the motion. So back to the original motion to reject this, or to vote not to approve this agenda item so that me and Councilmember Carmona are in alignment.
So we, we have an active motion, you're saying that we can have a?
Right, right. Again, at any time, there could be a substitute motion and that's the motion that you vote on first and then you go back to the original motion.
Okay, and, and any, any member of council can make that substitute motion?
A substitute motion.
Okay, but it'll be seconded?
Right. If it's, if it gets a second.
What do you try to say, Rob?
Rob, would you like to speak?
Well, I, I want to ask if this is allowed. Can you shop motions? Because, no.
No, you can, again, you can.
He withdrew.
No, no, no.
I withdrew the change.
Oh, the change.
Right, the motion is still on the table.
Yeah, correct.
The original motion is still on. But if someone wanted to do a substitute motion, you can do that, but you have to get a second. So, no, there wouldn't be a shopping around, it's just someone makes a motion, if there's a second, then you vote on that one first and if that doesn't go through, then you go back to your original motion.
I always thought we had to clear the motion, you can substitute a motion?
There is, you can do that.
I guess I stopped reading Robert, Robert Schule's order at, at that chapter. Can I do that?
Yes, you can make a substitute motion.
So, I don't, I'm motion we take agenda item number fourteen and.
Refer to Budget and Finance Committee.
Refer to Budget and Finance Committee.
Technically, it's ten o'clock, you're past policy. Sorry.
All right, so that's a mo, that's a motion to.
City.
Well, I was the second in the motion, no? So he's the first. I, I am the second or no?
You are the second for the original motion. Legal has said that there's now a substitute motion that's been made. We're at our, and, and is that seconded?
Do I need to, do I need to be agreed? Because, so not necessarily I am agreed.
It could be anybody who can second it.
So your, your motion would still be in place, but if, if there's a substitute motion that goes ahead of yours, then that's the one that you vote on first. And if that does, if that is, if that doesn't get approved, then you go to the original motion.
Okay, so if I'm following correctly, what, what we just did was there was a substitute motion by Councilmember Johnson to refer this item to the Budget and Finance Committee that was seconded by Councilmember Reitz.
Right.
We have these two motions, the first one we're gonna vote on is a substitute motion, the second one we're gonna vote on is the.
You wouldn't vote on the original motion if the, the substitute.
If the, if the substitute passes.
Passes. Or you could go to the original motion first and if that doesn't pass, then you go to another motion. So it's up to council on what they'd like to do, but there is a substitute motion in place.
All right. This is, my apologies for my unfamiliarity with some of the procedures. So counsel, we have the substitute motion and we're gonna vote because we're past the, the ten o'clock, so.
We were passed before I made the substitute motion. Not, not to throw another wrench, I'm sorry, I've, I've never, I trust you, but like, I have never heard that before and I'm kind of uncomfortable now.
And that's fine, so you can, there was a motion in place, so you can vote on that motion if you just want to do that, which is what's on the table right now.
Okay.
Because you are past ten o'clock.
All right, so we're gonna, since that happened after ten o'clock, Matt.
Sure.
The legal recommendation is that we don't have the substitute motion, but we still have the motion that we're gonna, you know, have this.
Yes, because it was, there is a motion.
There's a live motion, essentially.
Right, exactly. So you need to, you need to take care of that and then it ends at ten.
Okay, okay. All right, so counsel, we're gonna go ahead and call the votes on the motion, which is to not approve the change to the financial policy or the amendment to the financial policy as stated on the agenda item. That's the original motion that was made by Councilmember Litchfield and seconded by Mayor Protem Carmona. All those in favor of not approving the amendment to the financial policy, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
So the motion to not approve the amendment to the financial policy passes, I heard three ayes and two nays.
I, I am with them.
I'm sorry, I heard three, three ayes not to approve the amendment to the, so the motion passes, but the amendment does not pass. So counsel, at this time we're at our limit. We, this can obviously be brought back with, you know, further, further attention, but I would either recommend that we make a clear motion to continue our meeting until, until tomorrow, we have up to twenty-four hours, or to adjourn.
Tomorrow.
There's nothing, oh, there's a executive.
Executive session item.
But just a reminder that, that there's been guidance from legal to not have that while the city administrator is not in pers, able to be in person.
Let's reschedule.
All right.
I move, we turn.
Motion to adjourn, is there a second? Second from Counselor Litchfield? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, so we are adjourned at ten oh five PM.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, feel better.